And this is our city council study session for April 12th, 2021. And we will call this meeting to order. This once again is a virtual participation this evening. And per Governor Isley's emergency proclamation, 20-05 and 20-28. And stay safe, stay healthy. The City of Auburn is holding public meetings virtually at this time. City of Auburn Resolution Number 5581. Designates City of Auburn meeting locations for all regular and special study session meetings of the City Council and of all committees, boards, and commissions of the city as virtual locations. And with that, Sean, will you please call the roll?
Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
Here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember J. Raj.
I am here.
Councilmember Malanga.
Here.
Councilmember Stern.
Here.
And Councilmember Trump Manuel.
Here.
All right, thank you. So council, this evening, we only have three items on the agenda. But these items could possibly pose quite a few questions from each of us. So as always, if you could naturally, please use your raised hand function. So I can see your hands raised in the, on the screen with a little icon hand. And I will recognize each council member in order of their hands being raised. And then also, as we ask questions, I would ask that if you have a number of questions, perhaps you can ask one question with a follow up or two. And then from there, I will ask other council members to have their questions asked. And we could always go back to a council member if they have further questions. So we can do that protocol tonight and we shall be good to go. And if I can't see your hand raised, then Sean will inform me that your hand is raised. Because most of the time I can see it on the screen. Other times I don't see it on the screen. So with that, we will move into our agenda items for council discussion this evening. And the first item on the agenda is the facility needs assessment and master plan. This is our draft final plan briefing with Director Gob.
Good evening, and thank you. I'm actually going to hand it over to Senior Project Engineer Matt Larson to do a kickoff and introduce our consultant who's going to do the presentation for you tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ingrid. Thank you, councilmembers, for allowing us the opportunity to speak with you today on this project. The last time we, we spoke or we presented to you was back in December, where we discussed our preferred concepts. And this presentation, we will be discussing the implementation and the phasing of the plan. And our consultant team has been hard at work preparing this plan for us. They've done a great job. We're really excited to get to this point in the plan. And now kind of on, on our side, the hard work sort of begins now that, now that we have a plan sort of, you know, kind of drafted up and now we can, we can move into implementation, hopefully. So without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and hand it off to our consultant makers, Julie and Beth. Take it away.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Let me just share my screen here. All right. So thanks again for having us. And we're, this, I believe, is the final presentation for this master plan. So it's been great working with you all this full time. So today, we're going to just do a brief overview since it's been a while since we've been in front of you. Just look at the major findings and recommendations of this study. And then the draft phasing and financing plan that we have worked with finance with. And then, of course, just review the project prep. So if you recall, we set some goals for this project when we first started it. We want to create welcoming and safe spaces for your staff and for the community that improve service and that connection to the community. And we want this plan to address the issues and improve efficiency in your facilities. It's important to understand how your facility needs impact the funding priorities. Also want to recommend some cost effective investments that, that will be supporting Auburn into the future. And then, of course, you know, creating that plan that doesn't sit on the shelf. It's actually something that's used, achievable, and definitely supported by you all and the community. So if you recall, this project has been in three phases. We started out looking at the, your facilities, assessing needs. Then we looked through, we developed some alternatives. Went into your project team and the, and the subject matter experts that you have on staff and discussed those, tried to refine them. And then, of course, this project kind of went on hold in this last summer as the, everybody was dealing with COVID-19. And, you know, the racial justice movement and the financial context that was ever evolving. And we just, we worked, used that time to really refine the, the alternative concepts that we had to come back with some more refined feasible concepts. And now we are here with the final plan that you, I know, have all seen. Right. So to date, some major findings and recommendations, just to do a little recap. If you recall, the Justice Center is extremely cramped and it's just not able to accommodate growth. Because of the seismic upgrades, there's a lot of inefficiencies with ability, with the facility as well as unusable space. There's a shortage of workspace, locker rooms, workout area. There's just not enough space for everybody. And then, of course, the armory and evidence is undersized. And there is just not enough parking and security for the staff. Maintenance and operations was the other area that was a key player in this. Most of the facilities are inadequately sized and not well configured to adequately support the crews that you have. There's not enough warehouse and shop space. The storage, there's limited cupboard storage for that high value equipment and fleet vehicles that you have. Most of your facilities are aging and that's going to be requiring increased maintenance to support the growth that is coming. And then, of course, there's limited capacity to serve parks in northeast Auburn. So in our initial assessments, we had, we came up with some major findings from that. We realized that police, really, it's just not a feasible option to renovate the Justice Center. It's not something that's going to give, be a solution for 50 years. And we also found out that the best location for a future police campus is either downtown or near Lesco Park. For maintenance and operations, it was determined to leverage current properties to support both Public Works and Parks MNO. And in addition, it was, there is a need to have that satellite, Parks MNO satellite up in Lee Hill to be able to service the new parks that are coming online there. And for administrative, we went through the whole assessment with them, but realized that their needs are just not as pressing as police and MNO. And the idea is to just improve the current space use and then to do a full condition assessment on the city hall to make sure that there's targeted investments over the next 15 years to extend its service life. So our initial draft recommendations, we had for police, a $65 million project that would have given them a brand new facility that would have met their service needs for the next 50 years. Maintenance and operations, we budgeted for $142 million project that revised their current headquarters at that location and also added a Parks satellite up at Jacobson Tree Farm. And we renovated the Game Farm Park satellite as funds were available. And then for administrative, our recommendation was to sit on that for a little bit aside from the condition assessment and revisit that in 15 years. When we took that to the leadership team, it was determined that we needed to explore lower cost options to be able to meet those critical needs as that was just not a feasible plan. So then we came out with some revised recommendations and determined to first purchase property for police. And of course, the more lower cost option would be around the Lesco vicinity. And then build the new evidence facility there. That would be a $10 million project, including renovations to the current Justice Center where things have been vacated there. That would tide you over for a little while. And then, of course, having that property purchased already is going to set you up for that future investment of $48 million to give the headquarters that police really needs for the future as time and funding allows. For maintenance and operations, we looked into lower cost construction and came up with a $24 million headquarters investment. And as well as making sure that Parks, the satellite at Game Farm Park had minor renovations to it. And then, of course, as Jacobson Tree Farm comes online, there would be a small satellite there as well. And then, of course, revised recommendation for administrative facilities were just the same, just to sit on that for 15 years and revisit that as time allows. In addition to the project recommendations that we're targeting, what is the critical needs right now? We also looked at the maintenance that you all do with your current facilities. As you can see, the spending from 2009 to 2018, you spent an average of $450,000 annually on maintenance. And you can see how the, the blue line is the industry standard. We, we looked into the, what is happening now, the pretty standard rate that is people are using for maintenance for city government facilities. And found out that you, that $450,000 was not, it was about half of what is typical industry standard being spent on facility maintenance. Is there any questions thus far on the initial needs assessment and draft recommendations? We'll, we'll go into phasing in just one moment.
Questions for Beth's counsel at this time?
Councilmember Stern has raised his hand.
Councilmember Sterns.
Um, yeah, so in the initial draft plan, you had 65 million for Justice. And in the revised plan, you have 58 million. So what is the difference? What's that? I mean, it seems pretty close. But I mean, what are we getting for 58 that we were not getting for 65?
So for, for the, the, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Julie, I think that the, the future headquarters was also taking into account the getting the site, now getting the property on the sooner side at Lesco. But I believe that the recommendations were still providing that future facility that's going to meet all police's needs. Is that correct, Julie?
Yep, thanks, Beth. Yeah, it's pretty much, we still feel that with your 48 million, you'll be getting the complete police headquarters that you'll need to serve your operation into the future. We just took a red pencil and we worked with your police chief and others, as well as the project team. And we were able to reduce some program elements that we thought were reasonable to come down. So there was some space reductions that occurred there, as well as some lower cost tertiary facilities. So things like, you know, where there were cupboard parking or maybe the evidence storage building itself, that's an area where we felt we could reduce construction cost with a reasonable facility of a different type. So we brought down the construction cost for a few of the elements. I mean, what's neat about that recommendation is that you're building a new 50-year evidence facility on new property and those will be there for you. And then, when you're ready to build the rest of the headquarters, it'll just come right along.
Okay, thanks. And wait, wait, wait. So this is all at Lesco?
So there's two options. It's really where you find the, an affordable, reasonably sized, reasonable shape parcel. So we determined that from an operation standpoint, around the Lesco Park area is a great area for police and could support, you know, create a civic campus feel with all the other civic facilities in that area. It's also an area that they, you know, is an operations center for them. So it works well and it's centrally located in the community. Downtown, though, is also a good location for them. So we believe from our market analysis, our real estate analysis, that property is going to be a little less expensive in the Lesco area. So that's why, as Beth was mentioning, that's kind of our, you know, look there first because we think you're going to get a better value. But if you find a parcel downtown that's a good value, that meets the size requirements, then that's a go as well.
Councilmember Trump Manuel raised her hand.
Councilwoman Trump Manuel, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor DeCoursey. Julia, what's the size of building are we talking about? And how much space is it going to take at the Lesco Park?
That's a great question. And maybe, Beth, can you look up the size of that building while I'm answering how much space at Lesco Park piece? Is that easy for you?
Nope.
Okay, I'll, I'll see if I, I got it, I got it. The, I think before I look up the, I'll look up the space for you in one minute. But just to answer your other question, what's important to understand about the Lesco Park recommendation is it's not necessarily, in fact, we know it wouldn't be on the current park part of the facility. So what we mean when we say the Lesco Park area is either repurposing parking lot or other area that you feel you could do without. If you can't do without it, then that's not going to be a good option for you. But there is some city-owned property in that zone you might be able to repurpose. But really, what we're targeting is other property around that zone. So private, so private property that's underutilized, you know, ready to be turned over. And I'll look up the size for you in just a second while we take another question.
Councilmember J. Raj has raised his hand.
Councilmember J. Raj.
Thank you very much, Julie or Beth. So when I see the $48 million for future HQ project, that's not right now, right? The money? I mean, okay, so that could be down the road in, but how many years are we talking about?
It, it depends on, on how you all, how things go in Auburn, I believe.
Well, I, I understand, but based on what, what is your projection at this point? I mean, you got to have some kind of projection for the $48 million, right?
But I, the facilities, investments that $10 million are, the idea is to at least get you, you know, 20, 30 years down the road. This, this plan was really to make sure that you were operational and doing well through 2040. But I think that this is the kind of thing that would be reevaluated as time moves forward. Just, you know, seeing where things are at with council and finances and everything.
Okay.
If I may, the pricing is in $20, $24, sir. So we just, all of the, all of these numbers on the slide, we just picked a year. When we, when we show the projects in the spending plan in the next section, then we've, you know, inflated them as appropriate for the year of investment. But that project, since we don't have a target year, it really does depend, as Beth was saying, when council feels comfortable and there's a funding path forward, you feel like you're ready to work with the community to, or, you know, use another funding mechanism for that, then you'll go forward on that piece. But we've hoped.
Basically, what you, so that's okay. Go ahead, finish what you said.
Yes, we've hoped, as Beth was saying, that if you have to make it work with this $10 million investment for up to two decades, we've hoped that we've set you up for that. We would encourage you to look to invest in the facility sooner because that is going to be very tight. But that will improve things substantially for the foreseeable future.
Okay, so when you say 2024, so it gives us a couple of years to figure out what we're going to do moving forward, is what you're saying. And, and beyond after that, because the pricing is based on, the $48 million is based on 2024 projections, right?
Correct. It's just based on, that's a 2024 cost estimate number for you. It's not intended to be achieved unless council is, is motivated that we, we assume that project would be phased out later.
Okay, so actually, in reality, the cost has come down a little bit from what you had venture earlier, which was what, $65 million?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much for the explanation.
If I may interject, there's a, there's a lot of the, a lot of these questions seem like they're around funding. So it might be best to move on to the next section and maybe take questions at that time.
If you would like, we're happy to do it. But yes, we're, whatever council prefers.
Okay, I have one question, and this may need to go to Ingrid first. And then kind of to either both of you, Beth and Julie, as well. So we know we're going to need some intermediary work done at the Justice Center for the police to get them more elbow room, although there's no elbow room now. So Ingrid, perhaps you could jump in here. I'm curious as to when we, and I don't know the full history of the Justice Building. I know it was commercial use, retail use for, for a long period of time. And then I believe the police took over and then we moved the court system in. Did we have projections at that time as to how long that facility would serve its needs? And what we basically projected to the public as to the cost of that at that time?
Well, I wasn't necessarily involved in that project at that time. So I don't know that I have those answers off the top. I know that when police moved into the Justice Center, they were almost at the capacity of the Justice Center when they moved in there. So there wasn't a whole lot of growth capacity in the building. And they have definitely grown since they've moved into that building.
Absolutely.
So while there may have been a growth projection of some amount, I think we've probably met that already in how police has grown. And so we do need to look long term at what do we do as police as the city continues to grow? The services we provide continues to increase. And therefore, our staffing continues to, to increase and our needs increase.
Exactly.
Basis of this whole plan and trying to look out, not only with the amount of space we need, but also the different types of space that we need for the different work groups.
Okay, great. Thank you, understand that. So when we look out at this long term, this future for the headquarters, Beth and Julie, what, I imagine existing plans, existing Justice Centers is to remain in court system there? Or what other plans we have for that, that building? Are we looking at, perhaps we sell that building? Or not quite sure what the projection plans are for that?
It's a great question. I'll, I'll take that. So in the interim, before you build the new police headquarters, you're going to renovate that building to better support police and retain court. And we'll, we can show you a little bit of how that works in the phasing and funding section. Once police has relocated, well, then you have a number of options. We do court was not a focus of the scope as it is a county function, but it is a partnership with the city. They too are space constrained in a significant way. And we believe that once police moves out, they'll, one, you're, you're going to have to continue with your partnership with the county and decide if this is the right solution. But certainly, you could recapture some of the space there to meet court's needs in a fairly cost effective way. Working with that building, it's got the seismic ready. You know, there's lots that are great about that building. It's just not big enough and not flexible enough for your police department. Then that will not take the whole building. So you will have other space that you could either choose to locate other city functions. You could choose to rent it as office space. You could choose to subsidize entrepreneurship or nonprofits in your community with lower cost office space. Or you could, at that time, have community facilities or meeting rooms or other things you might want to put in that building. So you'll have a number of different options depending on the agreement you make with court and how much you want to support their expansion in place or, you know, other arrangement you may have with them.
Great, thank you so much.
I'm able to answer the size question from the council member from before, if that would be appropriate. I believe it's round numbers and I don't have an exact answer for you, but it's about a two acre property, I believe. Actually, that's not true. It's just over one acre. It's 52,000 square feet is what I believe the site. We should get back to you to confirm that, though. I can tell you the square feet of the headquarters building would be about 32,000 square feet. And the evidence storage is about 9,000 square feet. And then there's some other operation storage and parking. There's some other littler buildings. And then, of course, you've got your parking for your police vehicles, parking for their personal vehicles. So that's what makes up the site. Let us get back to you through Matt, though, with the specific acreage that we'd be looking for there. I just can't put my hand on it right this second.
Thank you. I would really appreciate that. You answered my question.
Super. Okay, are we ready for draft phasing and financing?
We are ready.
All right. So let's talk through the phasing approach for each of these projects. So for police, first stop, you got to replace the roof of that building. So since you're going to stay in it, keep using it, unavoidable phase one project. Second phase and something we'd recommend, your real estate folks begin over the next few years, looking out in the market and seeing if there are good properties available. Acquire the new property and build the evidence facility. Now, here's your current site, this large, this is a, you know, you're looking from the top. This large building is your existing police and court facility. And your evidence facility, thank you, Beth, is in yellow. So once you've built a new evidence facility, you'll be able to renovate that building for gym, mat training, and lockers and showers. Those are three of the most awkward and difficult functions in the current facility. There are areas that are not working very well at all. And so that will improve the functionality of those functions. And then in the main building, areas that have that now been vacated by where your former training room was, your former gym and your mat room, you can renovate for office admin, you know, to meet some of their other critical needs in the near term. Also, their locker room is another area that's deficient. And so we've included a small renovation to hopefully improve the functionality of that area as well. So that's police. And in the future, as we mentioned, we hope that you'll be able to support construction of a new police headquarters. Let's go, oh, there's, should we answer questions as we go here?
Councilmember Stern has raised his hand, Deputy Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Sterns.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I, I just, I'm a little bit unclear about the new property we're buying. So are we buying with the goal of building a new evidence facility? Are, are we just buying property to fit the evidence facility? Or are we buying like a whole brand new campus and then just building a little bit of that out?
It's the, it's the campus. The idea is to purchase the land that you will need for the new headquarters in total. Now, I don't believe it's a huge property, so don't think of it, you know, you, you could see right now, your police facility, parking and evidence are on a pretty small site. Now, this site is too small, but it's not massive amount of area. And we believe it makes sense to buy that property now for a couple of reasons. So number one, then you put your evidence facility and there's operational efficiency when you build your headquarters there, right? There are some operational issues of having to have your evidence be away from your headquarters facility. We believe they're surmountable. We talked to the chief several times about it and that's something we see in the market. But that's not what you want for And that's something we see in the market, but that's not what you want for your long term forever solution. So you need to buy a property big enough to put evidence on so that your headquarters will fit. Second thing is land prices, as you know, over time are going up. We believe you'll get a better deal if you buy that property now for later. And but the third reason, and this is really the most important of all, if you um decide that you would like to bring partners in to fund, say you would like to do a public safety bond that's voted on in the future, that may not be the way you go. But so you have an option to do that. You need a site, right? If people are gonna vote, they're needing to know where and what part of the community will that facility be? What's that facility gonna look like? And so having a piece of property that you can plan around, talk to the community about how to design that facility to to welcome them um and work for their neighborhood, et cetera, is really helpful to have a place. So those are my.
Okay, that that really helps. And then how many acres are we looking for them?
So I I looked quickly and it's some, I believe, I don't I don't even want to say, I guessed earlier, but we really should get back to you so I get you the accurate number on that. I'm sorry, I don't have that at my fingertips here.
All right, thank you.
Councilor Baggett is raised his hand.
Councilor Baggett.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, basically, uh, just a couple of questions. Uh, are we proposing to leave the the court system in the existing building or relocate that over with the police building? Because they talk about on one slide, there is says acquire new Justice Center, which would kind of kind of indicate more than just the police.
Thank you for clarifying. For budget reasons and because it's a partnership with another organization, our estimates now, including the size and the price to build, are police only facilities. So we don't believe that it is essential that those two facilities are co-located on the same site. We've talked to both court and police to confirm that assumption. And just um in order to uh move the project forward without securing agreement to fund from the county or without Auburn having to front the money to pay for the court, we're keeping it at this time at a as a police only facility.
I see. Thank you.
Okay, let's move forward to M and O. So at your current GSA Park facility, as Beth mentioned, we recommend what is essentially a phased recapitalization of this site. So this is a much reduced cost from the full rebuild model, which was our starting place. And the way we're doing that is we are making the very best use out of the buildings that are there that we can um invest in and hopefully extend their life. And we're also using lower cost um construction for um the new facilities. And I don't mean that it's junk. I just mean it is, you know, functional, durable buildings. That's that's the level that we're recommending for this M and O facility. Phase one, so that's in pink. Those have some critical projects and they're coming up soon. Those are in your CFP. So those are enclosing the parking that's gonna protect your critical biggest vehicles that need to stay above freezing that have water in them primarily. Um, provide some redundant central stores space. You're very short on storage, so for emergency supplies and other storage needs, um, you can easily expand your existing main M and O building at a bay essentially for storage there. Um, and replace the fuel island. And we hope that is in partnership with the school district and off site on their property just south of yours. And then critically, work to remove the deed restriction, which is in the hatched area on the southeast portion of the site. That really opens up that existing site to allow you to be able to fit all of your functions on the site um into the future. So one of the reasons why the former um plans were on the more expensive side is they included purchasing property to meet all your needs. So this is a much more cost effective approach. Second phase, um, phase two, so this is the yellow, is constructing the new crew building for Public Works and the parking associated because the site for the new crew building is right on the main staff parking. So you can't do that unless you park them somewhere else, so that's why you need to get that deed restriction off. Um, and constructing your wash rack, um, that's a really critical project. Um, if any of you have taken a tour on that site and seen their existing wash rack, your crews are doing incredible work um with very little. That is a not appropriate facility for the kind of work that your your folks are doing. Um, finally, in um the later phases, three and four, you're then, now that you've moved your crew out of the main building, you're remodeling it and expanding it for your fleet shop. That's another area that is very undersized um and will be improved a lot in this plan. You're providing parks, crew space and storage. Um, and you are covering your highest value fleet. So note, we're not covering all the fleet here. There is gonna be a number of vehicles that will not be undercover, but your bigger vehicles, the more expensive ones, the ones you wanna keep as long as you can before you replace them, we're getting them undercover. Any questions about this approach? Making best use of your existing assets, that's the plan. Notably, um, and this is a good segue, um, ultimately, you will have even an additional piece of this site that is available for expansion. So I should also note that this site, um, this fits the majority of the things you're gonna need in the next twenty years, but ultimately you're gonna need more space and part of more space is relocating these ball fields. Good segue into parks. So for Parks M and O, we are recommending, I'm gonna start in the middle, even though um this is uh, start in the middle because it goes with the ball fields. Up at Jacobson Tree Farm, um, we are recommending that you replace the ball fields from GSA Park at that location, so that we hope is more convenient um for residents in that area. Be more accessible site, be more of use to your community. And then at that same time, as the master plan evolves, build an M and O satellite at that facility to serve that park and other parks um in that area of Auburn. Um, another critical project for parks that's happening in phases two and three is the game farm park, um, adding of crew space and remodeling the space that they're currently in to expand their shops and storage. That's another cost effective approach to make that facility work for you for longer. It's less expensive than the original plan. And then finally, this is a close up of the Parks M and O portion of GSA Park that we were just looking at. This highlights the relocating of the greenhouse and bulk bins to free up this access. Um, yep, so it's moving those yellow to allow that access right through to fifteenth. That's important to improve functionality of that site, especially as you grow. And then adding storage and renovating some existing crew space in that facility. And that's the blue and the blue hatched in phase four. Any questions on phased approach before we look at cash flow numbers?
Councilor's turn is raised his hand.
Go ahead, Councilor's turn.
Um, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, so we're we're basically just moving the ball fields, it sounds like. Um, and and so who uses the ball fields right now? And will they they won't have, will they have any problem using the new ball fields?
That's a great question and.
I I can answer that.
Yes.
Daryl.
Thank you.
Yeah, so they're primarily used by our own Auburn Parks and Rec programs as well as the Auburn Little League. And we do have a couple of grant restrictions on there from the RCO, um, where we would move those restrictions up to Jacobson Tree Farm. So it's all Auburn residents that use those fields. And the goal would be able to increase capacity at the tree farm site as we would probably put in synthetic fields that are lit. Um, and a lot more access to residential communities. So it would actually increase participation by moving these. This is a very valuable piece of property to have two ball fields on, but we definitely cannot use it, lose the two ball fields as they both have restrictions as well as a high need.
Oh, well, so is the restriction that they have to be like baseball fields or can be anything?
No. Um, um, they they could be anything, although I think that the Auburn Little League put quite a bit of money into the project, maybe eight or ten years ago. But a lot of the new fields that are being constructed are, um, you know, they can be soccer and baseball or lacrosse, soccer, baseball, so they'd be much more multi-use fields, but still be able to play baseball on them.
Oh, thank you.
You bet.
Councilor Baggett raised his hand.
Yeah, real quick one. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, I know you've probably looked at this, but I thought I had to ask the question. Have you looked at uh possible outsourcing of any of these these tasks rather than building out? I know we've been very good about keeping a a fixed uh workforce here. Uh, but have we looked at outsourcing any of these tasks?
So I can answer from our perspective. Um, evaluating costs and benefits of outsourcing is not something that was part of our scope of work. Um, what we do support is um the uh the best possible operating scenario that the leadership in the city feels at that time. And so um in many cases, if there are desires to outsource certain aspects of operations, then, you know, obviously we work, make the facility plan to support that.
Yeah, it kind of makes sense that, uh, you know, coming from a Boeing perspective, uh, they were big on outsourcing and uh that did not fit the mold in all cases, so. Uh, and I know Daryl has a a lot of pride in his people and his teams and they do a great job. It's just that I would think that uh the uh the parked area would probably lend itself a little more to uh to outsourcing perhaps some of those tasks and maybe mitigate some of the construction. But uh, that's uh something that maybe we ought to look at. Thank you.
Okay, let's talk cash flow. So as Beth mentioned, we did note that your maintenance spending has been below industry standard. So we are recommending a phased approach to increasing that budget allocation over time. So if roughly you're a little over four hundred thousand dollars now, um, as, you know, by the by the end of twenty years, um, we were hoping that, say, in five year increments, you could up your allocation of maintenance money um in an increment over time. So obviously, there's a million different ways you could get from where you are today to where you want to be in the future. Um, but this is just one reasonable approach um that we've seen, you know, be adopted by other municipalities that we thought we'd offer you here. So it basically says, hey, don't try to get from four hundred thousand to nine hundred thousand or a million dollars in maintenance spending per year right away. But over time, um, in increase your um investment in your facilities and in maintaining what you have and recognize that as those facilities age, you're gonna need to probably spend more than in many cases you have. And so this shows one way to get there. So in terms of capital spending, here is what it looks like to fund the projects that we just walked you through over time. So um, these charts have police investments in blue, public works investments in yellow, parks in green and administrative in orange. And what this shows is uh for the next few years, while your budgets have no flexibility, you're doing the essential projects that have been already identified in your CFP. So this is roof replacements, a little bit of investment on your public works M and O site, essential facilities, maintenance um projects, um, as well as um, a couple, you know, capital investments, small capital investments. Then you move into the early phase of construction where you're working on design and acquisition of the police um property. So acquire the property, we're hoping in twenty twenty four, working on design that facility, then you're building evidence storage and remodeling. And then the yellow and green show the phased approach that we walked through of investments in public works and Parks M and O facilities um over time. Now, as, next slide, please, Beth. As council knows, um, adoption of the plan, um, when it's finalized, um, over, you know, the next several months, I believe, is when that's scheduled for, is not a commitment to funding um as we've identified this approach in the plan, right? That council will be reassessing and making decisions through the typical budget process. But we did um work very hard with city leadership and finance to identify for council a reasonable funding path forward, right? How could you possibly approve the basic facilities plan and investment strategy if you don't have some confidence that you at least have the ability to fund it in a reasonable method? And working through with finance, um, the preferred approach, which would um take care of all these facilities' needs and be a fairly um efficient and fairly, you know, relatively inexpensive financing mechanism would be a councilmatic bond focused on facilities. This would be a thirty eight million dollar bond and would require approximately a two point two million debt service um based on the assumptions and reasonable parameters that finance um projected. You'll note on um the right, the bar graph graph shows um what part of that two point two million would fund each of the projects, right? So it comes out to that's a little more than five hundred thousand a year for police, about that same amount um for Public Works and Parks M and O. And that solid is what would be coming from the general fund. So it's about a one point two million general fund investment to pay that bond payment. The remaining approximately a million would come from utilities fund portions. Um, and that would be directed at the appropriate pieces of the public works um uh projects. Couple more slides here and then we'll open it up for questions about this and all all other aspects. So what does that look like in terms of impact on your general fund and your utilities fund? So this shows your CFP projects paid for by the general fund. Plus, it adds that maintenance recommendation that we covered, right? So this adds your um current maintenance funding hanging in there until about twenty twenty five and then an increased level of maintenance funny funding, we hope, um, starting in twenty twenty six. So it shows the CFP projects through twenty one uh from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty four. Um, and then the bond payments beginning in twenty twenty five. So this recommends what the city would be funding um through the general fund and utilities fund, not what the bond proceeds would be paying for, which would be the capital spending as shown on the prior slide. Hopefully that makes sense and we're happy to answer more questions. Any questions on um this funding financing approach? Before we wrap it up, give you a couple summary slides? Okay, why don't we wrap it up and then we'll take final questions? So we hope that you're with us in supporting that this is a cost effective way to address your critical facilities' needs for all the citywide facilities in Auburn. Um, highlights are long term evidence, your evidence storage boy. If you haven't been there in a while, that is an amazing facility. They do a huge volume and those requirements are getting stronger and stronger over time. So they really need an investment in a in a good facility that'll work for them into the future. It also adds cost effective physical training space. That's another very huge deficiency that your police department has right now. Um, it positions facilities efficiently to serve the growing community. So having a facility in northeast Auburn that can maintain parks up there, that's an efficient move um and a good plan. So um, we hope you'll see that as a cost effective investment. It also addresses the most critical um M and O crew, fleet shop and storage issues and protects high value fleet. I've seen numbers that show covering that high value fleet. Um, you get a return on investment in less than ten years for um protecting them from the weather and rain. You're gonna have to maintain them less and you can hold on to those. You're going to have to maintain them less and you can hold on to those vehicles longer. So that's a, that's a really cost-effective um, smart investment in my opinion. Finally, um, we believe that this is an achievable plan with a reasonable and straightforward funding strategy and that it lays the foundation for a future bond measure for that headquarters' construction. Last slide, next steps. So our approach, we're in the um, last lap here. We've received staff comments on the plan and obviously um, a lot of collaborative work went into preparing this um, presentation. We'll refine our strategy or other um, based on council feedback. Um, we'll finalize the plan and then it will be presented to you um, through a resolution for, to um, memorialize the plan through a resolution in a future meeting. Thank you very much.
Council, questions? Council, go ahead.
Sorry, um, so I have a couple of questions. One is, does the bond, does that cover the cost of buying the new police campus?
Yes, that was a um, point of research and I believe that staff confirmed that. And please speak up, um, Ingrid or others if that's, if I'm mistaken, but I believe the answer is yes.
No, you are correct. It's uh, the property purchase can be part of the bond issuance, so.
Oh, okay, so we, and, and so we wouldn't be able to go ahead and do the evidence until we buy the property?
Correct.
Yeah, but, but that would be, does that have to happen after we issue the bonds or, right?
So uh, and Jamie, feel free to jump in if I get this wrong, but um, as I understand it, uh, the hard cost for the bond, it's a timing issue for when you would issue the bond as to what you can go back in time to reimburse for the property purchase. We can, as long as we indicate, we intend to reimburse, um, we can purchase the property six months before we issue the bonds.
And that's correct. Thank you.
And then how much would we be paying in total for the bonds?
In to, so in total for the bonds, under the, under the scenario that's in the, in the plan right now, it'd be 2.2 million per year. And 1.2 million of that would be coming from the general fund and 1 million of that coming from utility funds.
Right, so what's the total then?
2.2 million.
That's it? I thought we were doing 60 or, how many?
Yeah, so what, so is, if the question is what are we paying for the bonds? The debt service is 2.2 million. If the question is how much would we be spending in capital improvement with the bonds? We would issue bonds for 38 million, we'd have to spend 38 million.
Um, with the total debt service?
2.2 million.
I, I believe, I believe you're.
For 2.2 million a year?
Right, so I believe, I believe it's a 30-year debt service, so just doing, yes, 30 times 2.2 is 66 million.
Okay, there we go, 66 million, alright, thanks.
Thank you.
Other questions, council? Okay, apparently we have no other questions. Um, council, um, as has been presented, I would encourage each of you to go back through these slides again and other documents we've received. Uh, the key phrase on us for next steps is refine financial strategy based on council feedback. So I would encourage each of us to think through this process, uh, provide feedback. And once again, if you have statements or comments or questions, um, let's go ahead and have Antoinette combine those uh, as uh, in, in one kind of a document that she can send forward to staff and to consultants. And then they can get back to us and I would ask us to do this in a fairly quick time manner. You know, we, we do need to bring this back through city council for a resolution at some future meeting, but uh, time is pretty tight here as we looked at the needs and looked at um, the time this takes especially, even on a councilmatic bond, to have that prepared and ready to go. And if we look on the documents, this is set for the 2023, 2024 annual budget. So, which is next year. So uh, it's going to be a, a, a short timeframe before you hit that next budget season overall. So um, any questions for the questions on that? All right, uh, Julie and Beth, thank you very much for the presentation, for your participation and for the thoughtfulness that you have given this and working with staff. And again, we thank staff for their hard work and putting this together because this is truly a challenge for our city. And uh, we know the constraints that many of our staff, especially police and others in M and O are, are working under at this period of time. So we look forward to future conversations. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, next item staff, I'm sorry, council is um, presentation from staff on ordinance number 6817. And if you recall, we had to postpone this from our last study session due to some technical difficulties, which of course have now been totally corrected on that. And I would ask at this time, if you would please, council, let's hold our questions on this presentation until the presentation is complete and uh, give staff the opportunity to go through everything they want to present before we pose questions. So with that, Director Tate.
Uh, thank you and good evening, council members, deputy mayor and mayor. Uh, for the record, my name is Jeff Tate. I'm the director of community development for the city. And as deputy mayor mentioned, um, we started this a couple of weeks ago. Uh, so I'm going to start from the beginning again, uh, really for the benefit of our viewing audience as well. Um, so I'll get into a presentation here just in a second. I do want to mention that uh, in your packet, this starts with page 27. Uh, so page 27 is the agenda bill. Attached to the agenda bill is ordinance 6817. Uh, and while I'll be um, uh, making several remarks and going through a slideshow uh, here in a moment, I also want to mention that there's a few other folks that are going to participate in this presentation. Uh, and I will be uh, turning the mic, so to speak, over to those folks as we go through the slides. And also we have uh, 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 all the departments really represented it when we get into the Q and A portion of uh, this topic. So first I'd like to uh, uh, just acknowledge that uh, Harry Boucher from our city attorney's office is present. Of course, Daryl Faber from the Parks Department, uh, Ingrid Gaub, um, uh, Chief O'Neill, uh, Kent Hay. And then I also want to uh, mention that Debbie Christian, uh, executive director of the Auburn Food Bank is with us and Christian Faltenberger, who is the general manager of the Outlet Collection. Um, so uh, uh, as I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, um, we are coming back to city council to continue the conversation uh, surrounding camping on city properties. And uh, if I were a council member, I would ask the question, why are you coming back to us to talk about something that we talked about six or seven months ago? Uh, so there's a few things that I'll point out uh, before jumping into the presentation or the slides. Uh, one is we've got a few months of experience since the, the last ordinance was adopted back in August. Uh, we do have some examples we want to provide in terms of uh, conditions that are occurring in some of our environmentally sensitive areas of the city. Uh, talk a little bit about the growing concern of cost to clean up encampments. Um, also mention something that's a little, we're in a little different place that uh, right now than we were six months ago. And that is the uh, uh, soon uh, right around the corner launch of our Auburn Community Court. And then also some uh, feedback that we've received from the business community as well as the police advisory committee. Um, so this presentation is divided into a portion where we're going to go through some PowerPoint slides. And then we're going to transition over into a short video as well. Uh, so I am going to uh, attempt to share my screen here. And uh, trying to show a PowerPoint presentation. So maybe deputy mayor, if I could get a thumbs up if you can see that, excellent. Um, let me go into presentation mode. Um, so first of all, we're starting with a single site. This is an area that we've sort of want to walk uh, council members uh, through what a single encampment site looks like. Uh, and right here uh, on the, the map or the aerial photograph to the left uh, is an area of our Auburn Environmental Park. And the environmental park is a large area of property that we own as a city that uh, really runs along the corridor of Highway 167 and it spans from uh, Main Street up to 15th Street Northwest. Uh, we have several encampments within the environmental park or have had several encampments within the park over the last six months or so. Um, this is an important area uh, that we focus in on. Environmental services is an area that uh, uh, is operated out of uh, the Department of Community Development. So we have a responsibility and we have a budget to manage these environmentally sensitive areas. Uh, the council has provided to us and it's important, I think, as well to call out that there have been significant investments to acquire these properties, uh, to restore these properties and to uh, protect these properties. Um, so uh, some slides uh, that are pictures that show uh, you really what it looks like to enter into encampments with the environmental, within the environmental park. Uh, these are pretty typical pictures that show sort of the walkways that have been created through these areas. Uh, some additional uh, photos as well. And I think I mentioned this last time, but uh, kind of a shout out to council member Trout Manuel, who's hard to see, but uh, in that picture to the far left is she's navigating uh, those pallets uh, deep into those encampment sites. When you get back to the encampments, um, you know, these are pretty typical pictures uh, of the accumulation of, of things that um, over time uh, folks bring back into these areas. And uh, there's garbage, there's plastic, there's uh, hypodermic needles, there's electronics, batteries, uh, food waste, um, uh, feces and urine. Um, and uh, you find uh, pretty much almost anything back in these areas. And um, you know, again, I can't emphasize enough that these are classified as environmentally sensitive areas. And I think it's important to call out that uh, while these are public lands, uh, these conditions on a private property would initiate a very swift and significant response from uh, our city in terms of code enforcement action. Uh, some additional pictures that just kind of provide a flavor of what degradation occurs back in these areas. I'm going to pause for a second on this photo in the bottom center. That is not back in this area, but it was an important uh, photo to just call out as we're talking about environmental impacts. Uh, that picture was provided to the city by the Pualup Tribe, uh, who is trying to investigate and go upstream to find out uh, which communities have encampments uh, within their sensitive areas because of the recurring situation with hypodermic needles being found in their uh, fish nets as they fish the White River. Um, this is uh, this photo to the left is in the, the park. And you can kind of see in the background, a, a semi truck that is on 15th Street Northwest. Uh, and you can see the standing water and that is Mill Creek. That is uh, both, in both pictures really are portions of Mill Creek. A few other photos uh, to, to highlight, um, I'm going to show a map in a minute, but of the 43 encampments that we have found in the last six months, and not every encampment is occupied. So sometimes there, they've been abandoned and folks have moved on. But of the 43 we have found, 41 of them have um, a pretty strong presence of hypodermic needles. Uh, I think it's also important to call out that um, there are children living in some of these encampments. And I wanted to, to include a few photos because it's striking when you enter these areas and see that children have uh, lived and survived in these areas. And then you see some of, I mean, it's very uh, unnatural to me, but it's uh, you can see the natural things, the toys and the bikes and things like that of, of, you know, what children are uh, have acquired and are playing with in those communities. Um, so we're kind of in this spot where it uh, we have to face the, the reality of what it's like to respond and to clean up encampments. Um, so here in this slide, I've said that uh, there's an uh, estimate to, uh, there was an estimate to uh, clean up this encampment for about $25,000. Uh, and the more that uh, time goes on, the more expensive that gets. Um, you know, again, the encampment uh, in this case is causing harm to the wetland and the fish resources. Uh, right now it's really challenging because it's the worst time of the year to go in and clean up an encampment in a wetland area. You can't bring back dump trucks and pickup trucks and things like that to clean it. You have to haul everything out by hand. And even the activity of hauling it out by hand, when an encampment is 300 yards into a piece of property, it will cause damage to the environment and will have an obligation to restore that. Uh, I also fear that when we clean up these areas, uh, we will be back uh, doing the same thing uh, months from now again. And then there's factors to consider. I put this slide in here because I think if I'm sitting there thinking about these things, I'm like starting to pro, like brainstorm, like what do you do to, to not have that kind of thing happen? Um, so that, you know, the fencing is something that I would think of. Uh, but fencing is a challenge because fencing is not something, it's contrary to uh, what we would do in an environmentally sensitive area. Because fencing uh, blocks the migration of the animals and, and wildlife we're trying to protect. Um, city code right now does not allow trespassing and of course, uh, ordered 68117. Uh, uh, is one feature of that would be to restore that capability. And I know we'll get to that part of the conversation soon. Um, and then again, once we clean up, uh, my fears will be back and continuing to do that uh, frequently. And it'll be very expensive. Uh, here are two maps. Uh, this is the North Auburn. The next site will show South Auburn. Uh, the red dots on the left are where encampments have been identified. And to the right, um, I've added a couple of layers of wetlands and of the riparian corridors of our sensitive creeks and streams uh, to show how the, where those encampments are relative to environmentally sensitive areas. So on the north end of town, 25 of the 28 are within those areas. On the south end of town, nine of the 15. Uh, and also on these maps, we're not trying to indicate that this is uh, we don't know where everything is. So there are likely other encampments that are in other locations of the city. Um, so over a, a span of six months, um, 43 encampments. Uh, as we go out and we ask contractors to bid out what it would cost to go in and clean up these sites, these are the kinds of dollars that start appearing in bid numbers. Uh, I didn't have time to update the slide today, but uh, we now have one bid estimate for a cluster of um, encampments that one contractor provided. It's $179,000. We've had some other reactions and this is where I'm going to start asking some other folks to participate. But uh, you know, we, we hear from residents frequently. Um, I think council does too. Um, we hear from business owners and in particular the downtown Auburn Cooperative and the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, city council did receive a letter from the downtown Auburn Cooperative a couple of weeks ago. So it's important to call that out and some of the concerns that they have regarding uh, uh, encampments or activity that are occurring on city-owned properties. Uh, for the Chamber of Commerce piece, uh, I'd like to pause for a second and just ask if uh, Christian Faltenberger, again, general manager of the Outlet Collection, if, if we could get a, a few of uh, his thoughts or perspectives that may cover both uh, a voice of Chamber of Commerce as well as a voice from uh, the Outlet Collection itself. So Christian, uh, the mic is yours.
Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate you inviting me to be a part of this and, and hearing me out. And I also want to thank the council um, for making this a priority and uh, and holding us accountable as, as service providers to taking care of our fellow humans and getting them the services they need to, to, to get onto a better track and then that we recognize that. So I am speaking on behalf of the businesses here in Auburn and it is safe to say that none of us want to cut services to our homeless population. We just want them to. We just want them to use them. As it will be discussed later on, they are not being used to the fullest that they can be and yet we still have a growing issue. With that said, there is a responsibility that the city has to its businesses to provide a clean and safe environment for people to do business. As an example, there are five property owners in the Outlook Collection Shopping District. With the partnership with the Auburn Police Department, we have worked together to ensure we all are all using the trespass option. When dealing with our transient population, so we can ensure our properties are not affected in the ways it has has. On the city property like you have seen previously. Which is all well and good, however, they just move over to the trail to the east and continue to panhandle at the entrances leading to the property. Given that this is a right of way of that belongs to the city, we have no means to have them removed from that spot. End result is we as property owners can do nothing about the experience our customers have coming to enjoy themselves. At the Allah Collection, we receive over nine million visitors each year. Many of which are your constituents. They're the ones that provide me almost daily complaints about the condition of the area near the entrances and the excessive panhandling that occurs. But I also serve a large part of the population that do not live here, but come here to enjoy what we have to offer. What first impression are we showing them? What likelihood are they to return? How much money is that costing us? All of my competitors, you know, seeking for the mall side right now. All of my competitors do not share the same issues we do. They have the tools necessary to present a quality product to their company, their customers. Just take a look at the city's own leakage study and how much money is leaving the city of Auburn for products that we already have available here. Our businesses pay a lot of taxes and we do recognize that these taxes do go to vital services. They also go to take care of our parks and recreation areas and that are that are wonderful in our city. They also go to help pay for programs to help the homelessness and substance abuse issues. With that said, you have a responsibility to take care of the city and all of the challenges that keep you from being able to do that. That's what our businesses pay for. We do not want to be paying for hundreds of thousands of dollars that are spent on cleanup because we haven't used all the tools we could produce or could. To prevent it. If businesses can't get their needs met, they will choose to operate elsewhere and the city of Auburn cannot afford that. I'll end on this. Accountability is how we all live our lives. If we don't hold up our end of the bargain, then we have consequences. We were taught that this as children and are continue to exercise that notion every day. The only demographic that is not being held accountable is our ones that need it most. We want to hold people accountable, get their life back on track. We want to encourage those who think there is no hope to see that there is. And the cleaner community, both figuratively and literally, leads to higher community engagement. And that's all we all want. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Christian. I also want to just. Point out some feedback that we received from the Police Advisory Committee and and part of the presentation that occurred on March twenty second to City Council and. We received a few comments that were provided to the city, knowing that. We were having this conversation as well, so. There's two quotes that I have in here. I'm not going to go through and read these verbatim. I think it is important to just call out that in both quotes that are being provided. It is members of our Police Advisory Committee who are. Asking for assistance as well to help resolve issues within our community and to help people. This is a second comment provided. And I'll move to, you know, the timing of revisiting our approach. Again, as I started in the beginning, you know, why are we talking about this again? Why is staff coming back to City Council? And I think of particular importance is. The launch of the Auburn Community Court. The Auburn Community Court is a diversion court. Is a court set up to help people so that people don't. Face if they're cooperating, they don't face the same types of penalties or incarceration that might occur in a traditional court setting. So that is set to begin in a little over a month. The other reason for revisiting the approach. Is is really to talk about what sheltering services that that we have available to us in our community. And I do want to remind, in a second, I'm going to ask if Debbie Christian will say a few words from a sheltering perspective, but. We provide a substantial amount of money into sheltering services, both locally and regionally. So while we pay for the great services that are offered by. The Auburn Food Bank and and Debbie's skill and will. To assist in this area, we also pay into services in Pierce County and King County for other types of sheltering services. And shelters are not one size fits all and sometimes an individual needs. Service that, you know, one shelter can offer, but another can't. And as we move hopefully into the future and there's easing of COVID restrictions. There'll be opportunity for a bit more capacity within. Our own local shelter. So with that said, Debbie, maybe you can say a few remarks.
Yes, thank you, and I've just lost my remarks. Let me get out of this full screen so I can pull that open again. So we are here to help our people. And if they don't come in, we can't help them. Kent is doing a great job out in the bush, but ninety percent of people can't do what Kent is doing out there. When people hand out money from their window as you roll by a person panhandling on the side of the road, you've just given them a reason to continue to do this again tomorrow. Why shouldn't they come in? After all, you just paid them for an hour's worth of work and all they did is stand on a street corner waving a sign in your face. Once a person comes in, even if they can't be inside all that, all day long, they still get three meals a day and can keep their phone charged and their. Which gives them the ability to reach family or family to find them. They can get some sleep and have a warm environment. They can start to see glimmers of hope return. It's a hard job to live out here homeless and it's a daunting job to try to get out of it. But with with a rested body and mind, they can start to think differently about their life. But that all starts very slow. It's hard to come inside. If they don't already know us, then why trust us? After all, everywhere else they go, they get treated as a blight on society. People walk around them, no one looks them in the eye, no one speaks to them, or even if they do, it's to chastise them in some fashion. Wherever they go, they're watched, they see it, they feel the stairs, they know that security guard in the store is meandering up and down the aisle to keep an eye on them. But we try to be set apart from that. We have staff who are them. We are staff that have been homeless, are currently homeless and are working. They're homeless and have been housed and are now still working with us. Some have been serving them through dinners for seven or eight years and then there's me who's befriended them for the last fifteen. But it's taken a long time still to get some to trust me. But once that trust has started, then it trickles down and one can tell another, it's okay, these are good people here, they'll help us. But just like you, you look for someone to trust. You read the reviews on a business you want to work with or you trust Amazon to pick their best deal for you. It's no different. They need to trust, but most importantly, they need to be trusted. And they can't, that can't happen if we don't know them. Our numbers vary throughout the day and the month. It's always pretty full in the morning, just like it is the first of the month, it's pretty full. The day will go along and they'll get breakfast, some leave and go to work, some go and have doctor's appointments, some go to the store. Some just go to hang out in the park. As. As the day goes along, we see about forty to sixty on any given day coming in and out. Our month goes along in the first ten days, as money comes on their card or they get their social security or their supplemental incomes. Then they take off for the hotel because a better is a bed is always better than a cot. The next ten days we see an increase and by the last ten days, almost everyone is back because their money's ran out. We save three beds a night for hospital and police referrals. There's usually a call a night for at least one person to come through those referrals. And sometimes there are five or six calls. We have eighteen safe parking spots outside. With COVID, we had to move all of our beds six feet apart, which dropped our count bed count down to thirty three. We've moved some things around and we've now been able to get thirty nine in and without COVID, we hope to get closer to the sixty bed count. We've been a sweat equity program, accountability. This is a low budget operation. There's so much that we are able to offer and so little money to fund everything and so many ways to help is to give back. Help us help you, the homeless, by supporting the efforts that we're trying to help change the life. Some are easy, some are kindergarten rules, what you learn while playing in that sandbox. We try to encourage them to clean up after themselves, put all their toys away, keep track of their things, keep their hands to themselves. And if you can help someone else, then get up and do that. Help us all by dumping the garbage around the building, keeping our place clean. Clean the bathrooms, fold the blankets each morning, pick up your spills. Nothing is any different than what happened in your own home. Now you are living in our home. You have to get get back into the habit of taking care of yourself in order to move forward into your own place and share a place with someone else. Help us take care of what we have so we can keep it going. To a person, most are very glad to be asked. It means they were trusted. It means they can count on them. And some cannot, can't remember when the last time was that someone wanted their help or someone trusted them enough to ask. And once we've asked a few times, we don't even have to ask anymore because now this is their job and they get up and they do it on their own. So that habit is forming again. If they can't be trusted here for the small things, they won't be trusted for the large ones later. If they can gain our trust, then they can gain yours. Without a change in their trust level, they aren't going to try to find work. All of us hate homelessness. We don't want any of our family out here, our kids, our nieces and nephews. We don't want your kids out here. We have a seventy eight year old kid right now and I'm sure his mother's heart would be broken. We're not going to go out and hand out money and blankets and sleeping bags and say, find a warm spot for yourself and have a nice day. I'll see you later. We're going to work hard to help restore the life and the security they lost. And we need each of our citizens to help us do that. And that is looking them in the eyes, saying hi and ask how the day is. Help start to rebuild a life. And there's nothing wrong in saying, hey, sir, garbage just dropped out of your car. How about you pick that up?
Thank you, Debbie. I I'd like to, the next two slides will show a couple of graphics and I'm going to queue up Harry Beauchesne to. To explain the next two slides and. This is going to go back to the Community Court piece and why is community and court an important part of this puzzle that we're working on? I I want to plant a few thoughts before moving into those two slides and. That is just to revisit and to talk a little bit about what the ordinance that is before City Council is being presented to City Council, what it does. It does restore the trespass authority for camping on city owned property. But I think that the the two bullet points after the the top bullet are so crucial. And so I don't think well understood by by many, and I'm not saying that they're not understood by council. But you know, we've already started receiving some feedback from community members locally and from folks across the country. These two bullet points are crucial parts of this of this service first model. So trespassing authority is only exercised. After confirmation that shelter and transportation is available. So if if the service is there and it's ready and if a. Individual calls up Debbie or calls up another shelter service provider and there's a spot available and we can get them there. There, there, that's the only time that we start thinking about, okay, what's next? If they accept service and they want help. There's no reason to ever talk about trespass authority. There's no reason for it and I think. More than ninety percent of the time, that's going to be the scenario that we're working with. Someone wants to work with us and we're wanting to work with them. It's really the individual who refuses to accept service. The person who refuses to accept service and then refuses to to leave that location. That scenario is going to be single digit percentages. From week to week, month to month, year to year. The ordinance, this version does create a new provision that wasn't in the version that was discussed back in July and August of last year. And that is to include a not non judicial administrative appeal and Harry will talk about that in a second. And again, the timing is is important in terms of being able to use the community court to our advantage. As the diversion court to help folks out who need help. Harry, if you wouldn't mind walking us through this slide and the next one and you just tell me when you want to move to the next slide.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jeff, and hopefully everybody can hear me. Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council for hearing from us again. And this slide and and the next slide are illustrations that are important to include and consider as we look at this. Type of ordinance again. And we spoke about some of the issues that are reflected here on this slide and the and the next one, but it bears repeating now. As we look at this more closely. So this slide that you're looking at now is sort of reflects. Where we are currently with the infraction penalty that was set last summer in ordinance six, seven, eight, one. And with an infraction penalty is, we've talked about previously, is a civil penalty. It does not result in any criminal. Related penalty. So an individual who is cited for an infraction as are under our current ordinance. Would be liable potentially for a money fine, but but that is all. And the, once the infraction is issued. If if an infraction is issued, then the individual who's cited has essentially fifteen days to respond in in some way. And they can respond by either paying, but I think most of us probably can envision that. Folks who are cited for this offense may not have the wherewithal to pay. But that is one option legally is it could be paid and if it is, then simply then the case is closed and it's over. Fine paid and that's the end of it. If the other option they have is to request a hearing. If they go to a hearing and a hearing is set, then they will see a judge and it would be a judge in our traditional court system. In our traditional court building and and such. And can we go back to eighteen? Thank you. If they get a hearing and in our traditional court for the infraction, then the judge simply decides was the infraction of. You know, unlawful camping on city property, was it committed or was it not committed? And that's equivalent to, you know, guilty, not guilty in the criminal context. If if a judge finds that it was a committed infraction, then. The judge will impose a fine of some degree up to the maximum fine that was set by the ordinance. There are some other options that a judge has in dealing with infractions, but. Most of them, the vast majority of them are going to be limited to traffic related. Issues. So for example, traffic school, student court is is a program that's used for for high school students. And it addresses driving behavior of students and things like that. What you're not going to get in an infraction situation is any referral to any meaningful services. So drug and alcohol services, housing services, mental health services. Those are not a part of the discussion. And if a fine is imposed or if a person just simply doesn't respond or doesn't attend their hearing. Then the fee is imposed automatically and essentially goes to collections. And unpaid infractions can lead to. Person's driver's license getting suspended, collection actions and so on. And what's missing is any referral, as I say, to services that, you know, when I look at. Jeff's slide number six, forty one out of forty three of the discovered encampments have hypodermic. Needles associated with them. You know, that this is, this is a population that needs help. And they need help and they don't need fines and they don't need collections and for fines that they can't pay. They need referral to services and and. To help. And so the next slide. Talks about. And so the next slide talks about where this could go as proposed tonight. If this were a criminal enforcement ordinance, then a person comes into our court system as they would with any other type of offense, but they're given the opportunity through our office to be screened for eligibility for our community court program. And I will tell you that community court is a, is a program that's been developed over the last, you know, few, few years here. It's really gotten a lot of recognition and a lot of steam in all many jurisdictions. And it's really at the forefront of redesigning the criminal justice system so that it is not as adversarial as we are used to and about treating different offenders and different types of offenses differently. The thought is that incarcerating folks for certain types of offenses who need help, incarceration doesn't give them the help. It doesn't, it's much like an infraction. It just gives them punishment, but you're not necessarily getting service access that, that you might need. And the community court model changes all of that and it puts offenders in contact and in range of needed services. And that is what the community court program is. Our staff would, would assess individuals, their, their need for community court and their willingness to participate. And if they accepted into the program, the court is held at the Auburn Resource Center. And they would be given an opportunity to enter an agreement to have their case dismissed in exchange for making contact with and entering into needed services. And if they comply, then the case gets dismissed. If they do not comply, then they can be transferred back to the traditional court to be processed that way. But I want to tell you that keeping this ordinance as said as an infraction is certainly legally possible to do, but I would suggest I'd submit to you that it's missing a really big opportunity to utilize the community court program to its fullest extent by referring these cases there and giving folks the opportunity to undertake the services that we have available for them. And to try to get at the underlying causes of why we're finding people in this situation. Why are they there? You know, to assess a fine or to simply incarcerate, both of those are legally possible solutions, but they're probably not very effective. And that's what the community court model recognizes and what we're striving for here.
Thank you, Harry. I think it's also important, I had asked if Chief O'Neill could provide a, maybe a better description of what it looks like again for the two, three, four, five percent of the situations where you'd actually invoke a trespass action of what that looks like. Because honestly, I wasn't too familiar myself with what it looks like, you know, what a police officer does in that situation and you know, what happens to the person. So Chief, do you mind saying a few remarks about that?
Thank you, Director Tate, Mayor, members of council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this tonight. A lot of what I have to say is gonna also echo what Harry had to say about the criminal justice system and folks being introduced to it. The criminal justice system has been reimagined over probably the last five to ten years where it is certainly less adversarial, you know, focuses more on getting individuals help and treatment that they need instead of incarcerating them. It's definitely been proving that folks that are incarcerated don't get the help that they need and there's rarely things done to address the underlying conditions or the root cause that led them to be incarcerated in the first place. A lot of times when police officers respond to calls or they encounter individuals that are trespassing, it's usually on city property where they're victimizing the city, as we've seen in some of those photos earlier, or they're victimizing a homeowner or a business owner. And the first thing that the police usually try and do is gain compliance to get them to leave the property so that they can stop victimizing the owner. If the police are not successful in getting them to leave, that's when they may issue a criminal citation, which is simply an order to appear in court. If they still can't gain that compliance, it's usually when they make a custodial arrest and they transport the person to jail and book them. But when they do go to jail, what happens to them when they show up there is they're given a hot shower, they get to change their clothes, they get a meal and then they go before a judge in the morning and the city prosecutor will determine if this is a case that they're going to charge and file. And if they do, they'll go before a judge and they're usually released that day. If it's not that day, they're not held very long before they're released with another promise to appear in court. And then as they work through this process, the focus is to get them helped to either address their addiction problems or their mental health issues that are usually the root cause of homelessness and why they're out trespassing. Thank you again, Director Tate.
Thank you, Chief. And now we'll switch to the video that we wanted to present to council. So I know that David Travis is gonna help with that and we'll share a video screen here in a moment. And one thing that I wanted to mention about before we push the play button is just orienting you where you're at right here, looking at this video. So this is Fifteenth Street Northwest. And to the left of the street, you see some gravel and we call that a culvert. It's almost such a big culvert. It's, it almost is a bridge. And I wanted to mention this because this is the part of the Mill Creek Five K Wetland Restoration and Creek Realignment Project that wrapped up a couple of years ago. This is a seven million dollar project. The city acquired the land, installed that fish-friendly culvert to ensure that salmon can migrate through this channel. We also, and it's hard to really tell the before photos, but if we were showing a before photo, you would see for a three and a half mile stretch, a very straight creek. Took a couple of right angle bends, but it was a creek that had been modified years ago due to farming activity. So our project with partnership with the Department of Army and the Corps of Engineers was to realign that creek so that it had the twists and turns that you would find in the natural environment and also to revegetate the entire area, remove the invasive plants and plant it with the native species. So David, go ahead and press play. Thank you for doing that. And I'm just gonna turn it over to Kent, who's gonna talk through this video, not necessarily about everything you're looking at. There may be some of that, but also to talk, you know, to talk about a few stories or instances as he works out in these areas. So Kent, take it away.
Yeah, so what you're looking at is F Office Fifth Street. And it is, you know, I know we constantly say that people are just trying to survive, but this is definitely not survival. This is a place where people will in use, there's a lot of hypodermic needles down there, a lot of garbage, as you see down there. One of our bids for this site here, and I see on the left-hand side, there's an encampment that's still there that I, I'm working with the lady in there and, but this site alone is, one of the bids came out is at twenty-two thousand. Um, now the lady that's down there, whoops, so on that side. I'll talk about the other part after we do this. This is the West Valley Highway. And I go here every morning and we currently have three people camping in here that I'm working with. They help me kind of keep everybody else out while I'm trying to get them housed. And one of them is a vet and so I'm working on his DD two fourteen to come, which he told me he had today. So I will be there tomorrow morning to work with them. And another guy I'm working with, I'm waiting, I just got a call from social security today that his social security was turned back on. So this encampment formed and as you see, those are pallets that go all the way to the back. So this is the encampment I'm talking about that I'm working with people right now. And, and so we're, we're making progress, but as you see, there's a lot of fires that got started in there. There's people who have, and I know you don't, might not believe this, but there's a lot of bad things that happened back here. One night I got a call when I had met with a few people that were camping in here that someone tried to light somebody on fire. And so a lot of these charred areas are people who have tried to hurt each other for one reason or another. The amount of garbage that you see back here are from people, you'll see picnic tables, you'll see things that you can't imagine how they got back there. Mattresses and stuff. These are people who operate at nighttime, they have cars that they've purchased and they drive a lot of this stuff back here and then they carry it in. So a lot of pallets in order to get all the way to the back where one of the encampments where a lot of people were camping at. Again, you see how wet the area is, so it's really hard to get these areas cleaned up. This site alone, one of the bids came in at one hundred seventy-nine thousand. So this one is one seventy-nine, the other one is twenty-two, and so we're, we're almost up to two hundred thousand. This was made by, and I can't tell you how many people, it's probably about ten people that really did this much damage to the area. And it just keeps going further back. And if you go there now, it's made its way, it cuts through this area and then all the way back. And so every day there's some new stuff, someone's bringing something new and I'm trying to keep people out of there. But the hard part again is without being able to have some type of tool to keep folks out of there and, and get these people some help. This is what we're going to be facing constantly. And so like I tell them, in order for me to help you, really successfully help you is I have to be able to, if you go into the shelter, I can be there all the time and I can make the phone calls and you can have something to eat and you can sleep and all that stuff. But if I have to keep coming out here constantly and you're disappeared and and again, you're causing this much damage, it gets really difficult when there's more than, you know, it's not just one person. Because when they find out somebody's allowed to stay there, now you have two more people show up or five more people and then you get ten people. And again, then you have the chaos. I think what a lot of people don't understand is there's a lot of violence that goes on back here also. There's rapes, there's assaults, there's stabbings that go unreported because the police don't get called when things happen in here. This is just what happens in encampments. This area here is, can't remember what area this is or what street this is. But Jeff can explain that. This area here is going back to one of our parks. No, that's White River Trail, I'm sorry. So we have a lot of people that camp on the White River Trail. I just had recently a guy who ended up putting a tent on the trail because he knows I come down there regularly. He lost his phone number or lost my phone number. He needed help. And then when I helped him, he wouldn't move. He wouldn't, he wouldn't leave the area. And so that became very difficult because he kept bringing back more garbage and more garbage. And then they started using heroin and then the needles and so it got really out of control. So some of that we face, even after you help people, they still don't want to go inside, which is difficult. This area is one of our storm ponds, had a few people camping back in our storm pond area there. A lot of hypodermic needles, a lot of garbage. Now we have to figure out how to get that cleaned up. So we might have to stop the direct traffic in order to climb over that barrier because there's a fence in between there or try to figure out how to come inside the fence and then climb over and, and deal with a lot of that, that stuff. So this area here is in one of our parks. This is where a family and, and five children were living for a long period of time. And I was trying to offer help for over a year. And it finally took a lot of, I don't know what I call it, a lot of constantly going out there. It's a, it's a real long story. It's a, it's a mom that doesn't want to go inside. She thinks her kids should stay outside. A lot of these folks out here in this area call themselves river people. And so they like to live off the land, but this is what you have is the more people keep giving, the more they bring in, more tents. More, something gets wet, they throw it away, they'll be at another one, they'll bring it in there. And so, you know, I had to deal with this in the wintertime. You have kids living out there who are freezing, trying to figure out what to do with them. And yes, other organizations, organizations were involved, CPS and such, but nobody goes out here into the bushes, you know, and so you have kids out here who are definitely behind in school. Wanting to go inside, you have a parent who doesn't want to go inside for a whole bunch of different reasons. I did finally get her into an apartment and one of our agreements is she still gets to sleep outside. So it's like five nights outside of two in so that we can acclimate her back to being inside. So there had to be a compromise, but this took a lot of work. And but if I would have had a criminal trespass, I'll tell you that we were able, we'd be able to deal with those kids and get them to a safe place and then have the mom working on her issues, why we still would work on getting them in the housing. But we are causing more damage to people by leaving them out here so long and thinking that just putting them in housing is somehow going to fix this and it doesn't work like that. This is further in the, the park. And there's two beaches in this area. And so there's first beach and second beach, and this is the second beach, as they call it. And this is where a lot of people have moved into. So right now, if you go back there, there's multiple people back there. A lot of the damage you'll see coming up right now with the garbage and stuff. A lot of people are camping back here, the, the season turned and the rain came in and flooded that area, washed all the debris into the Green River. And so this is what you have left. That's, that wasn't washed downstream. But you can see the amount of, it looks like a hurricane hit it. And now if you go back there now, there's more people setting up and they'll do this until the next rainstorm comes. And then they'll wash it back into the Green River and we'll keep repeating this cycle and it definitely takes a you know, a lot of damage to the, to the property. And this is what you have. So if we don't, if we don't get control of this, again, this is, you know, and stop thinking that people are going to just decide one day that to take help. We're making it, we are, we are contributing to people's demise. We are telling people that this is the best that we can do. And by giving them all this stuff, we're saying that this is the best that we can offer and as Auburn, we do not accept that. That we can do better than this and we are doing better than this. But some people, there has to be a tool because then you can compassion people all you want to and you'll compassion people to death. I promise you that. Without accountability, you don't have a real relationship with people. So the lady I was just telling you about, I just gave you this one story. I was out with her today. I called her Friday and I asked her, did you pay your rent yet? And she said, no, and I asked her why and she said that she, she was scared to do it on her own. And so, you know, I kept talking to her and talking to her and telling her she needed to pay it. So she went and got a money order. She took a picture of the money order and, and showed it to me. And then I called her today and I asked her again, did you pay your rent? And she said, yes. And I told her she was lying and she said, yes, I'm lying. And so I told her she needed to go down there and pay it and she didn't want to. So I told her I was gonna come up to her apartment because I go there regularly because there has to be, once you get somebody housed, it, it's not the end. It, it doesn't stop. There, there still has to be accountability. And so I drove up there and when I got there, she was trying to leave on her bike before I got there. So I caught her just in time, but I walked her down to the office. And, and she had anxiety and she was scared and, you know, we talked about all that stuff. And got her in there and she gave her the money order and she had to write down her apartment number and all that stuff. But it was very scary for her and I understand that. But she paid her rent for the first time. And this is something that we're gonna have to keep doing, but there's still the accountability part. I know where she camps. But she paid her rent for the first time and this is something that we're going to have to keep doing, but there's still the accountability part. I know where she camps at still. I called her, she showed me where a camp is. I go there. And I have not told her she couldn't camp there. What I told her, she needed to keep it clean and if I get calls on there, then we're going to have to deal with that. But if that helps her. To start acclimating to being back inside with her kids, um, then I'm all for it. So, you know, when we talk about. Um, criminal trespass, um, there are people I hear that I'm working with who we are not moving because. I'm working with them, but when, when push comes to shove, when we get to a point where people are just not going to participate and work on their issues to get out of homelessness. Um, when there's services offered, when there's a path to getting into housing. Then there, there has to be some mechanism to, to, to help people. So I'll pass it back to Jeff.
Thanks Kent and um I'll just uh make a couple of closing remarks before turning it back over for uh discussion. Um, I understand that um, you know, again, we're revisiting a topic and uh. We had a con- conversation about this a few months ago. Um, I think that the city team uh as well as others in the community. Uh, are really uh, you know, pleading to uh make sure that the city has the right tools to lead our service first approach. And uh when you hear, it's fascinating to be around Kent because you can walk around, drive around and be around him and every day you'll hear five more stories of. His service first approach and um. Uh, I know council member Trout Manuel already knows this, but when we were out together and. Uh, we went to an encampment, there were two things that really struck me. Uh, one. Uh, thing that Kent said, which is, you know, kind of in response to like, how do we fix this? And he's like, are you kidding me? I've got five people here. I can help them. I, if I lose them, I can't help them. So there's no rush to push people um. Into a place where they're uncomfortable with. We need tools. But the philosophy is service first and you know, a lady comes out and says, you know, hey, um. Uh, you know, I know you can help me and has a conversation with Kent. And uh, you know, two weeks later, she's OD'd and she can't be helped anymore. I mean. It's not being dramatic to say that people are getting hurt and they're dying, they're sick. They're ma- they're staying addicted to drugs. There's all sorts of things that are happening out there because um. Uh, as much as we try, uh as much as Kent tries. Um, you know, sometimes you just need to push a little bit harder to help people get into the services that they need. And um, I think uh, you know, obviously our recommendation is that we bring ordinance sixty eight seventeen to city council for action. We'd like to do that next week. Um, and uh, and put the ordinance into effect. I do feel compelled to say that I think that we're going to hear uh voices from nearby and from far away. On uh concern over the one element that would uh create a trespass penalty for those who are not willing to accept services. And are not willing to uh work with us and uh in- insist on remaining on those uh public properties. I want to assure city council that we've vetted this significantly internally uh and with WCIA. Uh, and this is a, a, a legal approach. It's a, it's an approach that's consistent with the Boise ruling. Uh, it passes all of those checkboxes. Uh, we would not bring an ordinance to city council for consideration if it did not do that. Uh, we're also going to hear from folks who have some academic um pleadings or, or theories on how they would approach these situations and um. I think we should always be open minded to what folks have to say, but I hope that we can demand more of the people who are commenting or suggesting certain approaches. To show us more tangible uh outcomes and ideas than academic approaches. Uh, I believe that our business community, our environment, uh our homeless community. Uh, need approaches that make sure that we are helping people, but we're also holding them accountable. Uh, and I'd also end on the last point of saying that. Uh, you know, we're already spending a fair amount of money uh contributing to, to homelessness services. Um, that amount of money is going to pale in comparison to the cost that, that it will take for us to. Continue to go back into these areas and continue to clean them up. Uh, without demanding more of the folks that are occupying these areas. And with that, um, I, I appreciate council's patience on moving through. Um, this presentation, I know it's a long presentation. Uh, there's a lot of people who are available to answer questions. So at this point, uh, when questions come, I will probably just direct them over to people so that not everybody's trying to answer at one time. Thank you very much.
Jeff, thank you and to everybody who presented this evening, thank you very much and. Council members are raising their hands, but I would like to make a comment to begin with. Um, yeah, this took a lot of time tonight, but it took the time that was necessary. To have, I guess, the impact you would say that this issue significantly has. I have not had a chance to go out with Kent. I know other council members have, but just looking at that video alone. Um, it, it, it gives you shivers. I mean, it's, it's just almost unconscionable what you see. And Kent, um, you made a very, very, very clear statement that is so on target. That is, there are people who do not want to go inside. The lady with children who has an apartment but still desires to be outside a few days a week to get acclimated. I have that personal experience with a personal family member. Who was homeless for four years. Who's been in an apartment for three years. Who now has a business in the city of Auburn, starting up slowly with a business. Who the first few weeks when they got the apartment, slept on the floor and then went outside and slept in the van. Because they were afraid that the apartment would be gone, where the van would not be gone. That's what these people are experiencing. That's the help that they need that you so rightfully pointed out. Those are the services these people need and how we get that convincing of them to get into a shelter to feel safe. To rebuild their lives. That's the critical piece of this whole thing. This is such a. A, a, a strong message that's presented tonight. And it's a. Emotional message for me. Councilmember Jay Raj, then councilmember Sterns and then councilmember Trout Manuel, go ahead.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Um, I've got a few questions, but let me ask uh. Since we started with Kent, I'd like to know how many of the. Homeless people have died in the elements or homicide?
Yeah, so that question, um, so uh since January, I've had two people pass away that I've been working with. One is the, the one that Jeff was talking about, the lady who was. Off of uh West Valley Highway and we were supposed to work together. Um, and the sad part of that situation is she passed away, the, I was supposed to come back the following week and she passed away over the weekend and I walked in and found out that out. Um, she had overdosed in her tent and the, and the, the difficult part about that whole thing was her children had to come into that encampment. Um, to go through and look for personal belongings to, to take home and that's what they had left of their, their mom. And so. You know, it was, it was, it was a hard situation. It was very sad. And then the other one was in that video, you might have saw a white car. On the side of the street off of fifteenth and the police had called me to come and help him. Um, and so I went and talked to him, I already offered him help before, he didn't take it. Um, but I was helping him try to get his car started. So I was trying to jump his car. Um, I went and bought him gas and I came back, I put gas in the car. I mean, the car was falling apart and so we did everything possible to try to get the car started so he could move it out of the parking lot. Um, and uh, he didn't, he still didn't want any help after that. He told me he was gonna wait for somebody to come by and push his car somewhere. And uh, he died over the weekend. And so um, that was sad. So uh, yeah, so two. Two, so two people at this point have, have passed away that we've been working with in the homeless community. Uh, plenty of overdose, but, but haven't died.
Um, I'll wait, I'll give others a chance to uh ask questions and then I'll, I'll jump in again.
I'm sorry, I was muted. So, so thank you councilmember Jay Raj for that. So councilmember Sterns, go ahead.
Um, thank you Deputy Mayor, but I, I, I think councilmember Trout Manuel was before me.
Oh, she shook her head, no, sorry.
Um, so I, I, yeah, thanks. Thank you everyone for, for your presentation. Um, until a lot of, a lot of work went into that. Um, I, I, I had a, a, a couple, um, just sort of reactions like the deputy mayor did. I mean, y- you know, I think everyone agrees that. You know, what, what you see um, and, and the impacts are, you know, they're, they're tragic and, and they're incredibly emotional. Um, but I, I, I think we, we should be clear that, y- you know, the, the problem is, is, it's homelessness. And un- until there is, you know, a solution, you know, un- until, I mean, you have to remember again, it's. You know, it's not just anecdotal. Yeah, there are a lot of people who have mental health or drug issues, but the number one driver. Of homelessness is lack of affordable housing and the solution is going to require housing. It's going to, it's going to require jobs. I mean, honestly, but you know, un- until those causes are addressed. You know, you, you can lock up as many homeless people as you want. There're going to be more and they're going to keep on coming and yes, it, it's going to. Just get worse around the Green River, um, around the White River, around the environmental park. I mean, that, that is just going to keep on happening until homelessness. Itself goes down and, and I, I think that's just, you know, you, you cannot lose sight of that. Um, and then, you know, just, you know, I, I think of all the examples you, you gave to me. I just can't think of one person. In those examples whose lives would be better if they were suffering in prison um or jail. So. Um, I, I, I do have a question, which is that. Um, you, uh, Jeff, I believe, had mentioned um, the community court as, as a diversion path and. I, it, it, it's, it's not really diversion. Um, you know, diversion program. Takes someone actually out of the criminal justice system and there are, there are some, some really good ones though. Um, King County has a drug court that's, that has a diversion component. And uh, LEED, which King County also runs, law enforcement assisted diversion. Um, is in both Seattle and Furia. Um, and, and those actually do get people out of their criminal justice system. They are, they are diverted. So. Um, you know, that, that, that is actually something I'd be, you know, incredibly interested in seeing. Auburn pursue, but you know, since you brought up diversion, I'm wondering, have you guys considered um something like LEED or during, it's called COLEED?
Well, I think um, I'll take a stab at, at answering that. Um. Uh, I, it's, it's really interesting because I think as we, we all talk, I mean, we have so many philosophical similarities and then there's probably a couple of areas that. Uh, you know, we differ and I think that the drug court's a good example of how community court is intended to, to function. I mean, the reason. Community court is what it is. It's not just a different courtroom in a different uh building. Uh, it includes all of the services that are necessary to help the folks that um, that are in need. So the beauty of community court is the ability for the judge to say. You know, you need to do these things in order to get out of the criminal justice system and the things you need to do. Uh, require services and those services are next door in the same building. So Kent will walk you over and start working with you to get those services and then the services, if you. Follow through with those, you get out of the criminal justice system that way. You don't have the penalty that would be. Uh, provided to you through the traditional court system. So I think there's actually a lot of modeling that goes on. About how to address the needs of the people uh by packaging all of this together. So. I think that's important. I, I, I don't disagree with you that, that housing and jobs and, and all that are the. Are key for everybody, but it's not all there today. So. Um, I mean, I, I would um, kind of, I guess respectfully argue back that. We still need to do something to help these folks now. I mean, allowing them to live in the conditions that they live in without treatment. Um, is really tough for me to, to kind of accept and um. I uh, I, I really um. Uh, I mean, I believe that we again have uh services in our community that we can, we can connect people to. And I really, I really don't know what you're supposed to do in a situation where you go out and. You know, Kent tries five, six, seven times to work with someone. He's getting. A connection with someone. He's not pushing them out of where they're at or anything like that, but he, he's gaining uh traction. But if someone ends up saying no, his option right now is to write a ticket and walk away and it just keeps happening. If there's no, it's not breaking any cycle and I understand that there can be discomfort about. Um, you know, the concept of making something a trespass penalty. But I think that that trespass penalty is a, uh frankly, in many instances, is going to be a talking point to say. You've got to work with us, otherwise this is what happens. And most people will, will work with you rather than have that happen.
If I could just add one piece real quick and then I'll pass it over. Just wanted to, to, to talk about that housing part. So. I've housed fourteen people since January. Another person will be housed this week. Um, I'm going to court to turn in their paperwork to, to pay off some fees that they used to owe. There's a lot of people out here who don't want to go into housing, even though it's available for them. There's a lot of people don't want to take opportunity. They have to come to the table. So I understand that you're saying there's not enough housing, but there's enough resources for people to. Um, to take advantage of working on getting out of this situation. We've housed people together who have. Two incomes and now they're, they're working together to live together in an apartment. So I would push back on that and say that. Um, it's not about necessarily housing first either because a lot of these people have not been in housing. Um, don't know how to acclimate in the housing and are scared to go in the housing. It's not that it's not available, it's that. People are scared to take it or they don't want to work on their issue right now. So. Um, I, I don't know. I, I think there's, there's some, some points being missed.
Well, and I, I do think it's important for everybody to know that we work, we are continually working with King County. On their health through housing initiative, which, which will lead to. Uh, more inventory, more housing opportunity for those that need it in our community. Um, that is a priority. Uh, so I do want to make sure that it is known by, by everyone that um, that, that uh, that's. I'm really optimistic about that. I think a lot of us are optimistic about it because it's going to provide some of those. Um, for those uh, you know, the, the roofs over people's head.
That, thank you. Um, I, I really appreciate your, your responses. Um, I, I just would, um, you know, just want to clarify that. The LEED program, which is a true diversion program, i- it's, it's based on services. It's, you know. It's sort of like the two point O of community court. Community court, the charges are not dropped unless that happens at the very end. And that's totally within the discretion of the judge. And whereas diversion, the charges are held and the person goes out of the criminal system and they're no longer in it. Now, if they fail to complete the diversion program, then they can go back into the criminal system, but. Um, when they're in LEED, they're, they're not at all in the criminal system, but the concept other than that. Is the same. It's all service based. So, uh, you know, I, I, I highly encourage. Um, you, you know, I forget who the contact we have, who spoke to us about the community court, but. You know, King County does have, it really is an amazing program and um, that, that might be a better path forward down the road. Um, so I, I just uh, I, I suggest that, but again, I appreciate everyone's um time and their perspective.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Thank you Deputy Mayor De Corsi. Um, and thank you Jeff and Ken for uh taking me out there. And uh showing me how serious um our homeless uh issue is and how horrific. Um, the situation is for our water system. Uh, with all the needles and the feces and the trash and um. Everything that's out there that's going into our COVID that we have just spent thousands of dollars. To help our salmon fishes to go swim through. Yes, we have been getting a lot of emails asking us not to pass this, not to vote on this. And that uh the city has helped some of them, uh, these nonprofit organizations and they serve as some of our. Uh, ci- citizens of Auburn. What I would like to know is actually how many of these people, they have actually helped and got them into a house. house, help, you know, into a housing and gotten them off the streets. But these are questions I need to ask them. Um, also Chief O'Neil, thank you for, uh, sharing with us on how the police officers handle, uh, the perpetrators, the homeless, uh, people and how they get them ready to go to court. I just know that when I went out there, it was so emotional after I left and got into my car that I just started crying that we are allowing people to live that way. I don't think no one should be living like that. I think we need to do something. And now's the time that we need to do something instead of continue to just move on and move on and let these homeless people accept the way they're living. And that's what they're doing. They're accepting that this is the way, this is the best that they have, and this is the best that they're going to have. And then as Ken said, that one lady that he had been working with, when the mayor told me that, um, she had passed away, that hit me like she was a family member because I got to see her come out of her tent and talk to, to, uh, Kent. Kent does a remarkable job out there. And I just have heard so much about what he has done in King County. I have talked to judges and they've said he's done a remarkable job where he worked at. And I've seen what he is doing in our city. And I just want to, Ken, to continue doing what you're doing. And, um, I just feel like we definitely need to do something to help these people. Thank you.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Decorsi. Um, first off, I want to, uh, honor and acknowledge, uh, Debbie Christensen, uh, Kent Hay, you know, the, the police officers, others in our city that, um, work to help alleviate the problems we have for those experiencing homelessness. I just really appreciate the work you do. Uh, and I need to, uh, schedule some time to, you know, if I can to, to be with Kent and, and understand better, uh, the situation that those folks are facing and that we all face. Because this is a good for them or for our community. But I also don't want us heading down a, a path that, uh, may be well intended, but, uh, is not going to help us, uh, effectively address the issue. I, I'm not the expert in and do not know, uh, what that is. But I do have a question, which is, uh, concerning whether we have the capacity as a community, uh, to provide the services for all of our people that are experiencing homelessness. I mean, do we have the capacity to ta- take care of the problem for the people that, that are experiencing that homelessness?
We don't have the capacity to take care of everybody on the same day. That's the way I would answer that. We have to chip away a person or a couple of people at a time. And, um, I think that over time we can help folks and we do have, uh, the ability to tap into more resources. And, um, so I'm optimistic of that. I don't want to be misleading to say that, you know, we're at that point where, you know, tomorrow we could go approach everybody in every encampment and, um, uh, you know, put them into a position where they're accepting services or taking services. I think it has to be gradual and also you have to be patient with the individuals that are out there. Not everybody's going to be ready on day one. Sometimes as Kent mentions, it takes weeks to get people to a point where, uh, they're ready to take that step. So, so yeah, I think that, uh, I think that we have some capacity, but I think we have to take this slowly and we have to work with people at their pace too.
Thank you very much. I, I just would be concerned that we would outpace our capacity with, uh, citations that, uh, we can't really offer. I just would want to make sure that we don't, uh, just, uh, give people a greater burden at the end of the day.
Councilmember Brown, um, I'd like to say that, and I know people keep holding on to this criminal trespass. The, again, the folks that we're talking about, um, so just let me give you a, a quick story. So I, I was walking my dog on Sunday. I don't work on Sundays. I was walking through the park and I just noticed a big encampment off the side of my, just aside of my, you know, I saw it. And so I came back on Monday morning going over there because I thought it was the guy I was looking for. And it turned out with some people, it was people that I've run into before and I tried to help and offered help and they didn't want to take it. But I've been working with, I, I was talking to Mary's place last week about some of the services that they, they offered and, um, and working with their outreach team. And so it was a couple that I found who, her baby was taken and, um, she had some addiction issues and they want to, you know, um, they want to get the, the baby back. And so I told them I wouldn't move them, even though the park is closed from dusk till dawn because I needed to, to make this phone call. So we can come back with some outreach workers from Mary Place and see if they're willing to go. And they said they would go. So I'm waiting on that phone call and nobody's been moved, nobody's been trespassed. Um, but again, if we get to that point where Mary's place is like, okay, we'll take you. And they say no, then there has to be a, there has to be some other measure to get folks out of there and participating. I can't help people get into housing if they're not participating. There is, there are resources. I work with, um, veterans programs and there's housing available in certain areas that vets won't take because they feel like they're too small. So they won't go in because the units are too small. So I can't force them to go in, but I can say there, you have an opportunity to go into housing and we can work on this, but you can't stay in this area and do what you're doing here. So I guess what point do we get to a point where we say there are resources, there is housing available, but because you just don't want to take it, I'm just going to leave you here and allow you to keep doing what you're doing.
I, I, uh, do want to make sure that, uh, it's noted, um, and not to take things out of Turner to get in front of Deputy Mayor that, uh, Christian also raised his hand. And I don't know if that's response to what's being talked about now or for, uh, question later.
If, if we could, Jeff, I could like, like to get the rest of councilmembers' questions, then we could have Christian, uh, sure, participate in his, his comments. So, uh, Councilmember Baggett.
Councilmember Baggett, you're muted. I'm going to go ahead and ask.
But I, I just, I got it. Anyway, uh, again, this ordinance is, uh, i- is merely giving us the tools at the immediate moment to, to, uh, adjudicate this, this particular problem we're having. It will not solve all the problems as Kent and, and, uh, uh, the other presenters have, have mentioned. The, uh, the important thing though is it gives us the tools to do more for these people. It's not, it's not the intent, I believe, to make this thing a criminal act. Unless the people have no other choice and they give us no other choice. But we really need to understand that the way it's written right now does not give us those tools and this will. Now, how we use it and how the community court uses it will be yet to be determined. But, uh, it's very important that, uh, that everybody realizes that, uh, this is something more than what we have now. And it gives us the tools to, to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Baggett. Councilmember Malinga.
Yes, thank you. I had two questions. One is, what other cities have an ordinance similar to this? And how is it working for them? That's my first question. And my second question is trying to understand the process. So if a person refuses housing for whatever reason, they would go and be arrested and go to that community court. And then they would be offered services for mental health or alcohol addiction treatment. Is that what it is? And if they don't, if they refuse that, then they would go to jail. And if they go to jail, how long are they going to jail for?
You want me to answer that, Jeff?
Yeah, sure. I can, uh, maybe if you want to answer the second question and then I can answer the first one.
So the, the, right, okay. So the second one is, I, I think you're just, that the jail part is the majority of people, um, when they're confronted and we say, okay, we have shelter for you and they don't want to go, most people in a forty-eight hour, they move somewhere else or they go inside. So there's not a whole bunch of people that just refuse to, to, to move from that location and, and go inside. And if someone after the forty-eight hours is still there, um, after they're offered shelter again, they say no, then they're trespassed. They don't go to jail. So they're trespassed. And when we come back again, they're still there. Then we have to have a, a talk about now whether that person is going to be arrested. So there's four opportunities for someone to make a decision to either go into shelter or move from that location. Now, if they enter, now if they go to jail or in, uh, or they, they, uh, are charged with a criminal trespass and they, in their case is warranted to go to community court, they're offered community court. They can come do a lookseeing in community court, see if there is something that they want to participate in. And if there's something that they want to participate in, they take that. They go through and they complete everything that court asks them to do, their cases dismissed. It's no longer on their record. If they don't, if they fail to follow through, and again, this is not a one-time thing, they might get a, if they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing, they might get a sanction or community service hours or something else. Might have to write an essay or whatever it looks like. Let's just say somebody just doesn't want to participate in community court, then their case goes back to regular court. And then whatever happens in regular court.
And one thing that, uh, I'm a little out of my wheelhouse. I'm talking about how much time people spend in court for different or, uh, in jail. But as I've heard, uh, our city attorney's office and our chief of police talk about it, uh, criminal trespass, I mean, you, you know, there's factors that may change this, but tradi- you know, in a typical fashion, uh, a criminal trespass, if someone actually did get arrested and booked, uh, they're typically, uh, out of, uh, any sort of jail facility, uh, the next day, uh, maybe the same day. So this is not something where people are spending, uh, a long duration of time sitting in jail because of a criminal trespass. So, um, I, uh, Harry or Dan can certainly add more to that. Uh, and then just before I turn the mic over, I mean, one other city I know of that, uh, has a similar approach is Redmond.
Um, this is Harry, just to add to that, um, the ordinance that's proposed, the maximum, uh, jail time for the offense would be ninety days in jail. I can tell you that, um, I think that I have seen on one occasion, maybe, if I can recall correctly, in the past eleven years where someone did the maximum time for any offense. That is extremely rare. Um, most of the time what we see day to day, folks end up spending more time, uh, in jail because they don't appear for court than they do because they're adjudicated guilty of the actual offense. That's just how it usually ends up working out. If that's helpful.
Okay. Thank you, Harry. Councilmember Jay Raj.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, and gentlemen, thank you very much for the presentation that you guys put together. I have a couple of questions and the first one is has to do with mental health. How are we going to deal with that portion of it? Because with mental health, we don't realize, um, how they are going to deal with the issue themselves. And how, uh, how can they even understand what we are asking them to do? So that's a big thing on my head right now, trying to figure it out. And, uh, uh, you might want to try and explain that to me. Um, secondly, uh, the other, the, this came to me because my, my neighbors are hounding me about this, uh, because they find along the, uh, river, especially when it's not a wetland area and, um, where I went with Kent, a couple of, uh, went with Kent once, um, and he showed me some of the stuff. Some of those areas where, you know, kids can play and all that. And now they, they are not able to do that. What is the safety factor are we looking at? Uh, because I've also heard of the fact that they, the homeless folks have their own laws, rules and they, and they have to go by that. And, um, it's kind of scary is what I'm trying to get at. Um, so can you elaborate on that a little bit?
I would, I would tell you that, um, when it comes to mental health, there's so many degrees of mental health, right? It's not just one mental health issue. And so not everybody is unable to understand what's going on. There are people who understand that they have mental health issues. Um, there are people who, uh, are seeing someone for mental health issues and they're still homeless. Um, there's currently, uh, I'm working with somebody and their mother right now, um, because he's been homeless out here a long time. He has some issues and me and his mom are working together to figure out how to help him. And I will be going to see him in the park because I know him very well and we talk. And I'm trying to get people in the homeless community to help me, help him. Um, because everybody knows who he is. There's another guy who is very, um, you don't know what he's going to do. I mean, one minute he's, we're talking, having a conversation about shoes and what size he wears. And I'm trying to find some shoes for him. And then the next minute, you know, he wants to fight. And so, um, and then there's, there's another lady who does not know that she has mental health issues and it's very challenging and I'm trying every direction. So it just, it depends on what levels. We have a person, everybody's reached out to me to talk about this one person who is on one of our corners out here. And I've done everything to, to help him. I've signed him up for every service. I've referred him to a, a housing, um, that would be, uh, good for him to be in. Um, he's not able to go to our shelter because I will, I don't want to put other people at risk. Um, because I know he could sometimes be violent. Um, but, you know, he's a nice guy. You go talk to him, but he's created a, you know, we don't want him in the bus shelter. So people get upset about that. So he moves and then he goes to another area on the corner and he sets up shop and then people get upset with that. Or he goes on the other side of a business and he sets up shop and people get upset with that. And so what I try to explain to people is this is a person who has done everything that we've asked him to do. He is in the system trying to get housing and I, I won't trespass. You know what I'm saying? Because that is not good for him. Him going to jail on a trespass is not going to help him at all. This is a system issue. It's not a him issue. And so again, every situation is different. So when I talk to, when I hear you guys talking about criminalizing homelessness, there, there's no criminalizing homelessness. This is all different situations, different people. And this is a guy who understands he has mental health issues. He's doing everything to address his mental health issues. There's just no housing that is available for him for his needs. Um, and then there's other people who know they have mental health issues. They don't want to take medication. And so we have to deal with that. So it's just different levels of, of mental health and how you have to address it. And, um, and then when it comes to the laws of, of, you know, the bushes and the river people and all the different people that are outside, there's, there are different laws. I mean, they, some of the stuff you don't hear about that goes on out there. And so I don't know how to tell you about, you know, safety. I, I think, um, you know, you got a lot of people who are using, they don't know what they're doing when they're using. Um, they, they make bad decisions sometimes. You have people have mental health issues who go off of their medication and they're hearing voices and they're saying things. And so you have to deal with that. And then there's people who have mental health issues who are just fine. You know, they're, they're functioning somehow. And so I'm not sure what to tell you about the, the, the people who venture off, you know, off the trails and are scared to use those trails. It's, you know, safety and, and think about what you're doing to be mindful. But, um, people are people and I think if you treat people as such, um, they'll, they'll leave you alone for the most part. And, you know, they're, they're not scary people.
Can, can I just, uh, make sure that we, I don't know if we fully answered Councilmember Malanga's question about, uh, time spent in jail. I think that Harry, um, you know, did point out the maximum sentence, but, um, I think that, um, and, and I want to exclude situations where, uh, someone is arrested because they've assaulted the officer or maybe they have, um, you know, warrants for their arrest for other reasons. But if it's just criminal trespass, Harry, um, and again, maybe, maybe chief too, what does that look like for time spent, um, in a jail?
I think, uh, Harry's probably going to be most suited to answer this as he's present in a courtroom more when, um, defendants are sentenced. But I think even if somebody does assault a police officer engages in some kind of other criminal activity that's on a misdemeanor level while they're trespassing, um, the courts still making, uh, uh, effort to. to address the underlying issues and the root cause of their behavior and refer them to uh services. I think uh, for most misdemeanor crimes, um, it's my understanding that people aren't spending months in jail, they're not spending weeks in jail, they're spending days in jail. If they do not plead out their case to uh get services or some kind of other treatment, and they actually go through the entire thing for adjudication and get sentenced.
That's true, and um, I will say that folks who are in need of services, like the population that we're talking about largely is, um, that need for services is mitigating. Um, that that's something that would suggest that jail time is not appropriate. Um, as I said previously, where you end up seeing most of the jail time spent is due to repeat failing to appear and to follow up with the court. And that is why the community court approach has so many benefits, because it is going to be designed where folks are checking in weekly. Whereas now, in a traditional court model, you get lost in the system. You you're brought into into court for a case and you're given a hearing date, that hearing date is probably going to be forty-five days away. And you're talking about folks who have no ability to, you know, regular housing, they don't have resources to keep track of commitments and and so on, and they end up getting lost in the system. And they end up getting, you know, a warrant for their arrest, and then they get booked on that, and you end up booking two or three times before we, you know, can formally address the case, just to try to get them to a place where we can actually discuss the case. Um, that's where the bulk of jail time is imposed for for folks in that circumstance. The community court model is different, because as I say, they, it's weekly oversight, and it's in connection with the Community Resource Center, where you can make contacts and with services that will help to keep people on the path that we want them to be on. And that is the goal that we're trying to achieve here. Ultimately, if all else fails, then this ordinance calls for a ninety-day maximum sentence. But I can tell you that in practice, in circumstances like this, even if someone is adjudicated guilty, the likelihood that they get anywhere near the maximum is very, very remote. I'm going to say it's uh extremely remote.
Well, and maybe, maybe it's worthwhile, um, and not to put Councilmember Jay Raj on the spot, but I believe Councilmember Jay Raj spoke to the um, uh, Judge York, who would be the one facilitating the community court, and I don't know if there's any any information or feelings that you gleaned from that interaction, Councilmember, but um, don't want to miss out on that opportunity to to say anything if if there's anything uh to add.
Well, wh- what I gathered from Judge York is it's more of a place where they can kind of get some uh direction uh, rather than penalize anybody. And uh, because that was what I was worried about is the uh penalizing it. Because at the end of the day, if they follow those steps that he proposed, then all all those charges will be dropped. Uh, and and he says it has actually worked on on some people that he's already worked on. So uh, and this goes back some time ago when when I talked to him. So uh, and that was what I walked out uh with, and um for me, that's a good solution for the time being. Uh, and you know, if there's some other solution, I'm I'm willing to listen.
Thank you.
Uh, Christian, did you have a comment you'd like to make?
Um, it it was, as those actually got uh addressed with everyone as they were, they were speaking, and um, so no, I don't have any further to add.
Okay, great, thank you. Well, everyone, uh, Debbie and Jeff and Christian and Dan and Kent, thank you so very much for this tonight. This was a invigorating presentation and conversation. One that council definitely has to take a lot of time internally themselves, each of us, to review and look at. Um, Jeff, I would ask if we could to, if you could explore the lead program, as Councilmember Sterns mentioned, you may have already done that, I don't know, but if we could at least explore that and uh, take a look at uh what's happening in other communities with that, if that could be um something we can look at potentially as well.
I can do that.
Okay, with that, um, everyone, Debbie and Kent and Dan uh and Jeff, your staff, thank you so very much, what you're doing in our community every day. Uh, Kent, your job is a thankless job, it's just wow, the the work you do every day to meet these people in their environment and to provide the help, and then now have housed fourteen of them. That is, you know, it doesn't seem like a big number, but anything bigger than one is big. So that is just huge, and uh, thank you all again for the work you're doing in our community, for the people you're helping, and uh, we're going to tackle this together. We're going to make this work, we're going to fix people's lives, and we're going to make Auburn continue to be the best place to live. So thank you again, and council, thank you for your presentations as well on this and your comments and questions. It's been a long evening, we have one more area to cover before we adjourn tonight. That is our uh special focus area, which could take some time, so I am going to ask us to take a short break. Uh, it is eight oh seven, and council, if you could return at eight fifteen, we will reconvene and we will be recessed until eight fifteen. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I kept on thinking of you yesterday, watching the Masters, and
Oh, yes.
That was really something.
Yeah, um, Bob and I have a friend who plays golf with us, his name is Jimmy, and we're on the course, Jimmy always talks about when he was on the tour.
Yeah, we have to listen to that all the way through.
We do, yes. That was quite a tournament, but Bob and I did witness Jimmy getting an eagle at the Edum Call Golf Course, so best I've done so far is a few birdies.
Claude's had a few good shots, too.
Had a few, yeah, had a few birdies, yep. I've almost hit a few birdies. The flying guy.
Among the trees and everything else.
Yes, exactly, yes. All right, so we're almost back with everybody here, almost.
Councilmember Trump, Manuel did have to step away.
Okay.
And then Councilmember Brown, can you turn your camera up front, please?
There we go. Okay, everyone, thank you very much, we will now call the meeting back to order. At this time, uh, we'll be doing our finance, technology, economic development discussion items, and I will turn the meeting over to Councilmember Baggett.
There we go, thank you. Uh, we do have tonight one uh uh piece of legislation that is somewhat controversial uh for the business community, and it's the uh B and O tax that we're going to review. Uh, I would like, uh, because of several uh correspondence that we've received as council members uh, from some of the business community, uh, make sure that the the Jamie that uh you address uh, or your staff, address the uh the uh funding that we're getting from the federal government and how that can cannot be used for this purpose, so that's an important thing I think we need to clear up. Um, because we seem to be getting a repeated comments from some of the businesses. Of course, no one really wants to add any more taxes to our city businesses or our people. But uh, if you've been following our budget uh reviews that we've had over the last several months, uh, you can see that we're going to be having some trouble uh, in the future, so we need to address this uh fairly soon in order to be in a position to uh to do, do the things that we need to do as a city. Uh, with that, uh, Jamie, I will turn it over to you for ordinance number sixty-eight fourteen.
Excellent, thank you, Councilmember Baggett, I'm Jamie Thomas, I'm the Director of Finance. Um, for those um in the audience that are following us tonight, um, and you bring up some excellent points, and I did um intend to address some of those um questions and comments that we've been receiving, the more reoccurring themes as as far as questions and comments that we've been receiving from the business community, community tonight. So what I was um going to do for um this evening is, originally I was hoping to bring um the council um kind of a final version of the code, but um based on um, the prior prior city council study session as well as some um feedback and comments that I'd received from council, um, I thought it would be really good to kind of reframe why we're considering the B and O tax um discussion right now. Um, I know we've been talking about this um with the council for about a year and a half now, and I think that a lot of our businesses and a lot of the folks in the community may have missed out on all of that history, kind of what has gotten us here, um, not necessarily in the last year and a half, but really the last three years. Um, this is something that when we we first started discussing this, um, and really formulating our plan over the last year and a half on how to ju- address this um fiscal sustainability issue. So before we kind of get into some of our B and O options, um, what are the pros and cons to those options? I wanted to refresh um the council's memory as well as anybody um in the business community in the audi- or the audience um listening along, why all of a sudden are we considering a business and occupation tax for the city of Auburn? So this chart is a, the general is, it kind of graphically depicts our general fund decline over um, really the next seven-year period. Now, this is the same chart that um Burke Consultants had provided us um about a year ago, a little over a year ago, and it's still scary in the out years. There is one change, though, and I I wanted to provide our twenty-twenty estimated, our twenty-twenty original budget compared to our twenty-twenty estimated final actuals. Um, again, our twenty-twenty actuals are not finalized yet, but um, we're getting close, so I don't expect the numbers to change too drastically from the numbers that I have here. But what we see, if you look into at our twenty-twenty original budget compared to twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty was um just a a special year in in a lot of ways, and it ended up ending favorably for us. And so when we're seeing the negative fund balance, we're actually not seeing that hit really until twenty-twenty-three now. Um, we start getting into issues, we still have problems, though, running into twenty-twenty-two. So we ended the year um ahead of what our original projections were, which is why that negative ahead of what our original projections were, which is why that negative, the really negative number is pushed out about a year or a year ahead in the positive direction than we had originally been when Burke Consultants had originally done their seven-year forecast for us. It was an eight-year forecast at the time that they had done their presentation. So what you see, though, when we actually get into 2021 and 2022 and beyond, so we've got about a $10 million gap. And how you see that $10 million gap is you see our fund balance continues to get eaten away by $10 million plus every single year. And obviously, that's not sustainable, because what's happening is we have revenues that are growing at a lower rate than our expenditure growth. Our expenditures grow at about 4.1% per year, and our revenue growth in, on average, in a good year, is at about 2% per year. And that is a combination of sales tax, primarily a combination of our sales tax growth, as well as the 1% on our property tax growth that we take each year. So assuming that their 2020 situation was an anomaly, that was a one-time event, really triggered why we ended up so favorably is we did receive $3.7 million in CARES Act funding that we were not taking into consideration when we were doing our budget amendments to address COVID. We also cut three and a half million dollars from the budget, essentially shutting down a lot of our parks and recs programs for nine months of the year. And then we also reallocated about $3 million into the general fund, an additional $3 million into the general fund that had, wouldn't have normally gone into the general fund. So we diverted funding from other places. And so with that, we did end up better than we had anticipated. But moving forward, assuming that we we start providing the same services that we've always provided in the past, and our revenues are limited, we are going to we're going to run into the same systemic issue that that we've seen coming now for the last three years. So with that, I'm going to talk a little bit about some of some of the ways that we had brainstormed and the things that we discussed back in March of 2020 about how we were going to address the long-term fiscal sustainability issues. And one of those, and I've kind of prioritized all the things that we had we talked about in order of things that we're not doing right away or that we're delaying for, or that we're delaying until further out. And then down the list are things that we have actually already implemented or actively working on implementation. So the first one is sales tax. We only have the ability to raise sales tax for two different for two different reasons. Public safety and transportation are two reasons that we can raise sales tax, and they both require voter-approved ballot initiatives. And the first one for public safety, we can increase sales tax by 0.1% in the city of Auburn. It would generate about $2 million a year, and it would need to be used exclusively for public safety, which is good. We could easily use that $2 million for public safety. However, we have a much bigger gap than just $2 million in our general fund budget. Like my previous slide had shown, we're looking at about a $10 million gap each year moving forward. So $2 million doesn't quite get us there. The other option on sales tax is doing a 0.2% voter-approved levy for transportation. And that would generate about $4 million a year, but it would need to be used for street capital and transportation, for transportation purposes. So again, we definitely could use that money. We have projects that we could use that for, but that doesn't help our general fund our general fund services issue. So again, it would help us provide better streets and transportation projects. Those are all definitely things that we can consider in the future, but I think our first focus was trying to get that five to $10 million gap each year in the general fund addressed. So we considered a property tax levy lid lift. Again, this is a voter-approved initiative. We, with a lid lift, with the way assessed valuations are now, we actually have quite a bit of capacity. We could, you know, levy anywhere between three and $6 million, maybe even more. If we need to, if we need to come there. Again, that's a kind of a heavy push. That's that's a lot of money, and that would be a voter-approved initiative. So we're looking at some of the other things that below this line that we could put into place first and see where that puts us before we try to go out and see when we actually really needed to do a levy lid lift on property tax. So then that brings us to the business and occupation tax, as well as the utility tax. So we are now working on the business and occupation tax. We were trying to find a tax rate and a code that would bring the city about five to $6 million in bridging that gap in our general fund. And knowing that it would take quite a bit of time to implement and get a good code that suits Auburn well, as well as getting a lot of the administrative ends, odds and ends put together, we had budgeted to put that into place in 2022. Leading up to that, we had actually increased our utility tax rates for our city utilities beginning this year in 2021. So that is already in place. Prior to this biennial budget, the 2122 budget, we have been relying on our reserve funds. So our savings account money that should really be used for one-time projects, we've been both in 2020, as well as budgeted for 2022 large transfers from those reserve funds to help keep our general fund balance afloat while we get of our, our business and occupation tax in place. And then the other thing that we've continually been retooling since 2019 is our cost recovery model. So this is mostly centered around our community development and our permitting processes, trying to find a better balance and recovering some of our administrative and overhead costs for the services that we provide to developers and in the permitting process in Auburn. The last thing I don't have on here, it is actually a point that Councilmember Baggett had brought up, which is the reserve or the relief funds that we are anticipating to get from the federal government in the next couple of months and that to be used over the next three years. We've received a couple of questions from the business community about why we're not relying on that money to help with our general fund issues. And while we wish we could, we can't. We have pretty little guidance right now on how we are able to use those, those relief funds. But the guidance that we do have, and it's very it's very clear from the Department of Treasury, is that money cannot be used to supplant any services that we're currently providing. So what supplanting means is if it's currently in our budget, we cannot reduce revenue or any other revenue sources, or even decrease taxes in order to continue providing those services and replace it with that relief money. Further, it can, so really what that means is that money can only be used for enhanced services that we are now going to put into place because we have this money. So we can't use it to backfill our current service levels. So that is where some of the constraints are. It's really supposed to be a one-time revenue source for kind of an economic infusion. So that kind of brings me to the next phase, the next kind of piece on that, which is means that we can use that money to help support businesses and residents to stay housed in the city of Auburn. And so we're going to be working on putting together a plan on how to best use that that relief money. And it very likely will come back into the form somewhere or another for assistance for businesses. But to, we cannot reduce taxes with that money. We can give it out. We can give it back in other ways. So one of the other considerations that we talked about actually twice now with the full council, when back in March of 2020, when we met at the council retreat, but also when we were putting the biennial biennial budget together back in September, we had a series of four workshops where we went through the budget and we discussed, we had the conversation about budget cuts and service cuts as far as a mechanism for balancing the budget. If we didn't want to be entertaining the idea of new or enhanced revenue sources, the only other option out of this systemic issue is budget cuts. And so I put a chart here to kind of show relative. We have an $82.9 million budget in 2021 in our general fund. And this pie chart really shows how that $82.9 million is split up among all of our other departments. You can see police, parks, the jail, community development, those are all provide direct services to our residents. They're also the most expensive departments, but they are the ones, and public works, if you combine public works and streets together. They are the ones providing direct services to our businesses, our residents, and the people that that do come through our city every day. All of those other departments, most for the most case, are support functions. So $15.6 million of our budget is really for those internal service type support functions, administrative functions. $10 million, which you don't see necessarily as a its own pie chart piece, it's embedded in all of the departments in the pie chart, is internal service funds that include facility maintenance, fleet maintenance, all of our IT services, which includes software, networking, hardware, and our insurance, all the insurance costs for the city are all spread out and distributed through all of the city departments. But that makes up about $10 million in that whole pie chart for those internal services. In our general fund budget, $82.9 million are related to 355.8 FTEs employees in the general fund, which translates to $47.9 million. So if we're looking at cutting money from the budget, we're cutting people. And so it's going to be a question of where do we cut, what services, and then really understanding what services will be cut then with those FTE reductions. For just illustrative purposes, a $10 million a year cut would be, would equal roughly 43 FTEs in the services that they provide. So it kind of took the average cost of an employee and all the services, all the service contracts that might also be tied to the average employee. And that's where you get 43 employees. And so when we're looking, if you're thinking about that chart that we looked two, two charts back, we have a $10 million gap every year. So a one-time cut of $10 million doesn't solve the problem. We're looking at a $10 million cut every year. So that is not sustainable, obviously. I think that we're also looking at an issue where we are working with pre-recession staffing levels. We've never recovered from the cuts that we made back in 2008 with our FTEs. Or a lot of businesses in our community have had an opportunity to recover and ride the economic gains. They're more cyclical. They they ride the highs and the lows of a strong and a weak economy. The city doesn't have the advantage of riding a high and catching up and ever, and we haven't had an opportunity to catch up with our staffing or some of the services that we had to cut back in 2008. So we, rather than being able to take advantage of high or stronger economic times between 2008 and now, we have just, our fund balance has continued to decline, and we've we've continued to feel a pinch. And our biggest concern is with the ability, if we could start looking at cutting FTEs, the ability to retain quality and engaged employees over a period of time, because there's definitely a morale a morale hit that takes, that the employees feel. And I know that that is not unique to the city. It happens for and for any, for any business that has to face layoffs. But we are truly looking at very significant layoffs if we're looking at cutting $10 million every year. So I want to take back to the, just a refresher of the proposed BNO combination of BNO square footage tax I had originally presented to council and just kind of highlight some of those impacts on businesses. So we have 5,800, approximately 5,800 licensed businesses doing business in the city of Auburn. The proposed BNO tax that I brought with a $500,000 threshold would affect 990 of those businesses. And we, I put kind of like the average impact of the 990 businesses that are paying. For example, retail, average, the average retail business would pay $4,200 a year. However, I want to point out this is highly inflated because this takes just the total tax collected for the year and divides the total number of businesses in the retail sector, which is 439. You can see that in my chart below. So that's just taking all of the BNO tax that we would collect from the retail sector and divide it by the number of businesses to give an average of $4,200 a year. So of course, there's going to be businesses on the low end and businesses on the high end. So for those businesses that are really on the low end of that $500,000 threshold, they're looking at a $250 tax bill for a year, and then so forth. So I've identified the services, average service provider would pay $2,900 a year with the low end being $750 a year for a business that's right on that $500,000 threshold. Manufacturing, $9,600 per year. And the reason for this is there's just so fewer manufacturing businesses that are really contributing to that overall BNO tax amount. The average cost per manufacturer is high. And on the low end, for a lot of the smaller manufacturers that are doing the business, their tax, annual tax bill would be $500. The wholesaling is a little bit different. So wholesaling would be about $3,400 a year on average. Now, some wholesalers have warehouse space. Now, not all wholesalers are in warehouses. But some of them are, we, based on our conversation two weeks ago, I had identified there's about 75 warehouses, we think would be impacted by the square foot, the square foot tax. And on average, those 75 warehouses would pay $18,000 a year in a square foot tax, which would bring us, in addition to the $3.94 million in BNO tax, the square foot tax would bring $1.35 million. So that's a summary of the proposal that I had originally brought. I was asked to present an alternative tax structure that would keep our BNO rates as low as possible and increasing our square footage fee to get us to where we need to be to still generate that five to six million dollars that we need to fill the general fund gap. I did not increase the threshold to $750,000. So many businesses drop off, and it produced such a small tax amount when I dropped the tax rate so low. I'm not sure how much actual benefit there would be in really having to be an O tax, but it would be so costly administratively if we're bringing in less than a million dollars a year. It just seems like the cost-benefit analysis for a $750,000 threshold plus a super-low flat rate of 0.025%, I just stuck with trying to compare apples to apples for this scenario. So this is the same $500,000 threshold. So it would still affect 990 businesses of the 5,800 in Auburn. And it would generate $1.22 million in BNO tax. So in order to kind of get us to that, that five to $6 million, we would need to increase that square foot tax to 30 cents per square foot per quarter, which would kind of redistribute. If you look at the average impact, it really reduces the average annual impact per business across all sectors. But it would really impact, and in fact, it looks like I did not get the correct, 18,000 per year for the 75 warehouses. It's actually more than that. It is it would be, for some of, for some of our largest warehouses, it would be anywhere between 25 and $600,000 a year for increasing the square foot tax to 30 cents each quarter. So that's what that proposal looks like. This is again, trying to reduce the burden as much as possible on those 990 businesses. Um, so that was the comparison where we need to get us to that five to five, six million dollar um, in additional re- new revenue for our two thousand and twenty-two budget. So I put together kind of a pros and cons list for our three options that I that we've really talked about tonight. Um, the variable rates, which is what I had originally presented um, a couple of weeks ago. The flat rates, keeping our rates low, flat, um, and increasing our square foot tax, and then the budget cuts. Um, for the first option, um, that really allows uh, allowed the variable rate. And I think that this was something that the council had had been pretty much in agreement with in in the past, which is recognizing that different industries have different profit margins. And normally, on average, certain industries have higher profit margins than other industries. And so having kind of a tiered tax rate would help evenly distribute that tax burden across different types of businesses. Um, as well as the square foot tax would um, help um, increase um, warehousing activities on contribution to um, to tax that the city is collecting. Normally, their wholesaling activity is um, not contributing much in sales tax or in a proposed B N O tax as well. And then, of course, we could avoid any budget cuts in the current biennium. The cons is it's a new tax and it's very unpopular, especially right now in the time of COVID. And I know that a lot of businesses are, have really been struggling over the last year. And I know that struggle isn't necessarily um, miraculously going away. And a new tax um, does put some businesses um, in in a really difficult situation where they're facing potential layoffs um, versus, you know, the city having layoffs. So that is, that's the bit, the biggest um, negative for for that first option. The second option, it really reduces um, the tax burden for those nine hundred and ninety businesses that would be affected under that five hundred thousand dollar um, tax threshold. It's a very minimal business, a a very minimal tax impact. We're talking nine hundred and ninety businesses bringing in um, one point two million dollars. That's just a little over if you take the entire, every business um, that's paying um, tax, every, every nine hundred and nine ninety businesses paying a tax. On average, there it's a little more than a thousand dollars a year. So that really um, reduces the burden for a a most businesses in Auburn. Um, it, um, the the con to that, though, is it really significantly burdens one taxpayer type and not as your warehousing um, sector. And I I want to kind of go back to, I know one of the things that the council had talked about a lot in the beginning was we wanted to impact as few businesses as possible, but we also wanted to distribute the taxes evenly as possible and as equitably as possible. It was one of the reasons why we've really addressed multiple different revenue options throughout this whole process. We didn't want to put this all on the backs of businesses. We didn't want to put this all on the backs of utility rate payers or property tax owners. We really want to distribute um, this um, general fund gap um, as equitably as possible. Um, if we did go with this um, this option, it would also eliminate our need for budget cuts because we would be making up, even though our business tax um, or B N O tax would be low, um, we would be making up for it in a square foot tax. And so for the budget cuts, um, it's a pro, we're not increasing taxes for our businesses. It really shelters um, those nine hundred and ninety businesses from any tax burden, um, which there is a huge benefit to our economy in that, in that regard. I mean, it helps encourage business, it helps um, keep businesses a a float that might be right on that line. And that, that's a, that's a huge benefit to to those businesses. Um, but on the city side is that we're not looking at a one-time cut, we're talking at compounding cuts. Um, at best, we would need to be looking at cutting four and a half million dollars in two thousand and twenty-two to offset that reduction in revenue that we already have in the budget for B N O tax. We would need to then cut another four and a half million in two thousand and twenty-three, and that would barely keep our fund balance um, right where it needs to be in order to be operational. And then in that third year, we're looking at ten million dollars, ten million dollar cuts each year. Um, and we would need to really kind of start doing the hard work right now to start identifying those service areas where, I mean, I don't, I don't think anybody would be a proponent of cutting everything all at once. So it's something that we would need to figure out how we prioritize and phase in some cuts and really come up with a plan rather than um, just cutting one big chunk all off at once. So that is where I'm at right now. Um, I am ready to move forward with um, a B N O tax code. Um, however, council would like me to move forward or I'm ready to come back and we can start doing some workshops and talking about um, our expenditure budget and and potential um, our our potential service levels. So what I'm asking, um, if we do, I'll just, my next slide, if we, if I do hear from council that you want to move forward with the B N O tax, I I'm proposing that we continue fast-tracking, I wouldn't say fast-tracking, we've been talking about this for a year and a half now. Um, but I would like to keep the process moving along um, because there is quite a bit of setup time in being able to get um, all of our front-end and back-end systems built up in order for um, for us to be ready um, for uh, uh, for B N O tax um, submittals um, at the beginning of two thousand and twenty-two. Um, however, if that's not the direction council would like to go, I I want, I would like to hear that from you as well. But if if B N O tax is the route that you guys are still considering, if you can point me in the direction of what you would want that tax structure to look like, so I can um, move forward with crafting that code. So with that, I defer to you guys.
Thank you, Jamie, uh, that's uh, quite a comprehensive summary of of where we are and where we may need to go. I really uh, would like to emphasize again the fact that the intent here is to make this as fair and equitable as we possibly can for uh, those businesses that it would be affected by this. And uh, uh, I don't think there's anybody on our council or our mayor that really wants to tax everybody, but the point is that's the way we keep our city going and we're in a growth mode. And uh, some of those options, uh, you have to account for that growth as well. Uh, not just uh, sustainability. So anyway, uh, with that, we'll open it up for any questions anybody may have from the council. Councilmember Sterns.
Um, thank you, uh, councilmember Baggett or or Chair Baggett. Um, yeah, um, Jamie, so the last, I mean, it seems like a day ago, but it was actually at the beginning of this meeting, um, we were talking about a a a bond. And I believe it was like half would be coming out of the general fund and it was going to be total of like sixty-six million. So I guess thirty-three million would be coming out of the general fund to pay for um, a new police complex and a new maintenance, maintenance facility. I mean, how can we afford to do that if we don't increase our general fund revenues?
Well, we wouldn't. Um, and I think that that's an excellent point. Um, I mean, we're looking at um, our facility needs. I think that we have a lot of services and programs actually that have been identified as high priority by the council and by the city and our residents that we aren't able to fully fund those services as they currently are. So adding new, new initiatives probably not going to make the cut um, if we can't identify new or enhanced revenue sources.
Councilmember Jay Raj.
Thank you, councilmember Baggett. Um, Director Thomas, uh, my question to you is is just so that everybody gets a clarification as to why the warehouse is being charged more. Um, I do realize that uh, is because of the fact that some of the sales that happens, we don't get the taxes on it. So can you elaborate on that, please?
I think there's, historically, there's been a couple of different um, reasons. I'm, the first one I will address just from a B N O tax standpoint. So from a B N O tax standpoint, um, the value of the products that you're selling or you're manufacturing um, are taxed in where they're actually sold or where they're made. So any of that activity that's taking place in Auburn, the value of those, of those goods is taxed in Auburn and then the tax rate and the taxes collected in Auburn. When it comes to not necessarily warehousing, but a lot of warehousing is wholesaling activity. So a lot of the the revenue that they generate is based on a wholesale activity. Wholesale means that they're just bringing their goods into the city, the it, the the um, the goods are being trucked into the city and then they're being trucked out of the city. But they're only sitting in the city for a transient amount of time. They don't, there's no value of goods that is actually generating a tax in Auburn. That we're just a holding spot for them. So is there some wholesaling activity from that warehousing that that gets um, taxed here that has um, what we call nexus in Auburn? Yes, it's very small, though, it's a very small percentage and and it's um, you can see that actually in our sales tax as well because sales tax operates in a similar way when you're trying to identify nexus. And our wholesaling activities just don't generate a lot of sales tax either because the sale isn't taking place in Auburn. It's just coming to Auburn, it's sitting in a warehouse, and then it's being transported or to a customer ultimately in some other city somewhere along the way. So the theory is we've got these big businesses that are using a lot of um, real estate, but they're also using the same kinds of services that other businesses in Auburn use. And so how do we get them to pay their fair share if they're not paying um, if there's really no B N, B N O tax liability? And that's where the square foot um, tax comes into play to kind of help even the playing field a little bit. I think there's another argument that says that you could say that um, one, that they don't generate as much sales tax um, like other businesses do, but also because of all those trucks coming into the city and out of the city, that puts a lot of additional stress on our road infrastructure. And roads are really expensive. So um, that's always kind of been um, a, an ancillary um, argument for why warehouses should pay just as much of the of the tax burden as any other business.
Thank you, Director Thomas.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you there, Chair Baggett. Um, yes, Director Thomas, uh, would you say that uh, I think you were probably in on the prior presentation about uh, you know, dealing with those uh, impacted by homelessness and the services that we're going to try to provide as a city as well as as the community and as well as uh, cleanup and other things? Would that be impacted uh, without uh, revenue? Would we be able to perhaps provide those services as well? Uh, if we do not see some form of revenue enhancement?
It's going to be really difficult. Um, it would be, it would be a similar answer to the question about our facility needs assessment, right? Um, those, a lot of those services, a lot of those cleanups, a lot of the connections to resources um, for homelessness, it does cost more money than what we already have in our budget. So we really are looking at needing to enhance that program. Um, or at least we would like to, and I know that that's a a priority for for most, to be able to um, either do the clean, do both the cleanups um, as well as um, getting folks permanently housed. And it's going to require more resources than we currently have dedicated to the effort. And any budget cuts we do is, will just set us back even further in being able to provide those services.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor De Corsi.
Thank you, Chair Baggett. Jamie, thank you again. I know you've been working tirelessly with this and uh, and have been very patient with us as we've gone through this entire process. Um, a- and again, this is such a such a difficult issue that we're we're faced with. And well over a year ago, we mentioned that, we talked about it in our budget retreat, about the issues we would have going forward. And uh, prior to that, when Director Coleman was there, the uh, heads up of the issues she talked about as we were going forward and and years out. I I I got those scratched over to places where you said today. And I've taken a bunch of those before, I got an entire folder full of things that we've talked about. But I think as an exercise, I'm not saying we should shell or will do this. As an exercise, I think we deserve it to the community to at least look at what budget cuts would look like, what they would do to um, eliminate, uh, reduce the services. Um, as Director Brown just mentioned, you know, what it does for a homeless issue, uh, what it does to a lot of our issues overall. But I think we at least need to, as a council, explore that and tell that story. Uh, we need to make sure that we don't leave any stone unturned in this process, if you will. And that's a piece of the puzzle we should look at. Uh, for me, I would look at something like, do we take our reserves and reduce it down to the five percent level? And I believe we're upward by eight to ten percent now, I believe. But uh, you know, is that a possibility? Or should we even look at those types of things? But just as an exercise to go through that process, I would be remiss to say that we'd be leaving something out if we didn't at least look at that.
Um, to talk about, just to adjust the reserves, we have been using our reserves. So we have about six million in reserves now. Again, that would get us one year. Um, it would get, it would fill our gap for one year. It doesn't address, it just makes it a bigger issue than in the year that we do do the cuts.
Yeah, I fully understand that. But again, I think what we're doing here over Zoom, other discussions, you know, paints a picture. But I think putting all that down and laying it out, you've done a good job between meetings with the chamber. But we get to that point where we basically have a document, if you will, that says, you know, if we did this, here's the impact. Um, you know, if we lose forty-three F T Es, here's the impact. If we lose ten F T Es, here's the impact. Um, you know, if we, um, you know, if we, if we continuously look at, you know, what the budget cut needs would be, this is where we will wind up being in two thousand and twenty-six and beyond. And um, it it, to me, it tells a, a much more compelling story and paints a bigger picture.
Councilmember Sterns.
Um, tha- thank you, uh, Chair Baggett. Um, uh, Director Thomas, I I was sort of taken aback. You 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 said that um, there might be a company or two that would end up owing six hundred thousand dollars under one of the scenarios. And when do we get to, where, when do we have to rename our town after that company? I mean, really, I mean, is that, I mean, is that totally possible?
It is, yeah. So that would be, that would be one of our largest warehouses that we have in Auburn and just based on the amount of square footage they have and the and the fee that, well, this is if we were doing the alternative proposal where we keep the B N O tax rate really low and then increase the square foot fee to thirty cents per square foot per quarter.
And 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 so what what is the, I guess, the policy reason why we would want to so disproportionately target one or two businesses?
That was a request that I had received to provide that information. So that was why I had provided that information. Um, my own initial proposal um, is the the tiered tax rates um, and then a ten cent per square foot per quarter um, for for warehouses.
Okay, so so there isn't really a policy reason to do that?
There, well, none of this is a policy. This is all information and data that I'm, that I'm trying to bring um, to council.
I guess I'm just looking for, you know, good government. Yeah, governance, you know, you 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 had mentioned values earlier. You know, equitable distribution, I'm just trying to see what the other flip side of that coin is.
Yeah, I I I think, I think the the request was coming from how do we reduce the B N O impact on as many businesses as possible? Um, and so that's where um, that um, that proposal and that where that idea came from. Not necessarily it was, this is what we want to see and this is what we want to move forward, but just what would it look like?
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Chair Baggett. Uh, just one last question, uh,
Uh, uh, you can only whip a horse so much and we have whipped the heck out of this one. Uh, but I'm wondering, uh, would it be helpful to you if the, uh, council members were to, uh, contact you with maybe like, uh, option one, option two, option three, something like that? Would that be helpful?
It would be very helpful because, um, at this point, I think we need to move in one of two directions. Um, finalizing a code or moving forward with, um, uh, budget amendment, uh, work study sessions and start figuring out how we're going to cut from our budget. So just needing to know which direction I should move is really what I'm, is what I'm looking for right now.
Mayor Backus.
Thank you, um, Chair Baggett. On the budget cutting exercise, first of all, is there, because this is going to be significant amount of work, is there a consensus first from council that you would like to see this? I see three noes. I see one, two yeses and three, three head nods, no, two head shakes, yes. That does not provide, and, and one ear tug. That, that doesn't really give us direction to move forward with this exercise. So if, if council has any discussion on that, but as, as we have agreed in the past, if there's not consensus on a request, then we don't move forward with that request.
Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
So thank you, Mayor, for doing that. So, you know, at, at, at this point in time, I'll withdraw that request. And, uh, I, I, I think we should go ahead and, and, and move forward and take up the discussions as we go forward um, with a, um, ordinance being presented and then we can continue our discussions at that point in time.
Mayor Backus.
Thank you, uh, Chair Baggett and Deputy Mayor DeCoursey. I, I think the, the biggest point here and, and why I'm saying that it's a significant amount of work is because a six million dollar cut in the police department looks completely different than a six million dollar cut in parks or in public works or a council budget or anything else, right? So, uh, it's, a- as we've talked in the past about looking at budget cuts, it would need to be direction from council on the areas that budget cuts would need to be made uh, so that we could then provide you with that information. But for us to come out, it, it, it's a moving target, if you will, that would, um, not provide you, it may provide one or two scenarios, but it wouldn't provide you with great data.
And I understand that and, and yes, I accept that explanation. And if we did go forward, I would expect council to step up and, and do this work. But, um, in, in the essence of time, the essence of looking at where we currently are and the further discussions we'll have in council, uh, again, I think we, um, as you said, we don't do that this time and the consensus is that we don't go forward with that request.
Uh, I would like to ask whether or not, uh, the council, uh, has consensus for the dates that have been projected. We have the April twenty-sixth additional study session to bring forward any additional information to the council. And then a May third, uh, regular meeting where we would actually vote on it. Do we have consensus for that?
And, and, and I just want to point out too, um, that would just be projected. If, if I bring a code, what I think is a final code, um, to you on April twenty-sixth and you would like to see some major revisions to it before you were comfortable with, um, moving forward and adopting, we can always push that out, just like we have already. I mean, I think that we've, we've continued the discussions, um, more than we had, I had originally anticipated and that's, and that's fine. I think that it adds a lot of value to our code and I think that's going to make our code ultimately better. So I don't want there to be a, we don't have to adopt me third, but I would like to, unless there's a compelling reason not to, I would like to move forward with that timeline.
Good. Thank you. I think we have consensus from the council. Uh, any other comments or questions for Jamie or, or relative to this issue? Seeing none, uh, I will turn the meeting back over to Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
Can I ask one more question? I'm sorry.
Oh, sure.
So I have, I have what I had originally proposed, um, for the B and O tax. So I'm trying to get some more information on how to move forward with the code then. I had brought my original proposal with the five hundred thousand dollar threshold and the variable rates and the ten cents per square foot tax. And then I brought the alternate proposal that keeps the rates very low and increases the, the square footage tax. Um, is there any preference on which, uh, method you prefer?
Councilmember Jay Raj.
I would go with the first proposal that, that you brought.
Councilmember Stern.
Um, thank you. Um, I, I, I would, um, agree with Councilmember Jay Raj and go with the first.
Councilmember Brown.
I would go with the first proposal.
Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
I'm a little concerned at how we're approaching this. Um, it's almost coming down to my opinion, uh, Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're, we're almost taking a poll.
Almost taking a vote, yeah.
Yeah, um, I would not want to go in that direction. I would say my position would be Jamie. I know it's a lot of work, but we have two alternate proposals we look at. And then at the study session, we go forward from there. I, I'm not quite sure how we would handle that, but, uh, we have two different methods here we're looking at.
I'll let them know. You, you can provide Jamie direction in which way to go. That's not a vote.
Okay. Sometimes it gets a little confusing. I apologize.
It absolutely isn't. Thank you for, thank you for erring on the side of.
All right. Then my position would be for the second one.
As would mine, if my two cents worth. Uh, but, uh, yeah, I, I appreciate it, Jamie, you taking the time to go through all this with us. Uh, do you have anything more to add to that which we've already discussed?
No, um, I'm, I will bring a couple of different versions of the code, I guess, forward.
Very good. And so, uh, yes, Councilmember Sterns.
Oh, oh, wait, I, I missed the whole thing. So we're, we're doing, we're going to bring both or was there? What did I miss? I'm sorry, I, I.
I think, go ahead, Jamie.
I, I'm not sure if this would constitute as, we're not, I mean, I don't know if we have consensus on. So I mean, I can, I can put together, um, a couple of different codes. I don't have much more information to bring for the council's consideration as far as how that impacts businesses though. Unless there was something specific that you would like to see, that maybe I had some data that I haven't provided on those business impacts, um, I'm not, I don't really have any more additional information. I, I think I pulled it together, I sliced it and diced it a few different ways. And, um, I, that, unless there's something specific that you're looking for at the next meeting, I'm not sure which additional information I can bring for, um, either proposal.
Yeah, when the horse is dead, the jock dismounts. I think we've gotten to a point here where, where we really need to move on with this. And I think that, uh, Jamie has provided us with, uh, a very good, uh, breakdown of our options. We've, we've discussed this matter, uh, going back to our, uh, finance meetings that we had for the budget for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. And now we're going to be soon moving into twenty-two and twenty-three. So we really need to, we can't push this down the channel too far. Uh, so be thinking about it and, uh, we'll, uh, regroup, uh, I guess, at our next study meeting and review this again with any po- potential options that Jamie may come up with. Check your left-hand drawer, Jamie. Maybe something in there.
Didn't you say you were going to do a bake sale? Somebody said they were doing a bake sale.
Yeah, Du- you know, Deputy Mayor DeCoursey, he's, he's a good baker. Cannoli. Okay, with that, I'll turn it back over to Deputy Mayor DeCoursey. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Baggett, and I would have to make six hundred gazillion cannolis in order to make this work. So like, for sure, I'm up to that. I know my wife's not up to making all the shells. Because at one time we did, uh, cannoli for dessert of my son's, we didn't eat any, and she made four hundred cannoli shells.
Oh, my gosh.
Yes. So she's never forgiven me for that. Anyway, this has been a long evening. Thank you, everybody, very much for your participation, your patience, your time and, uh, any other discussion items for this evening. All right. Any new business? Very good. We are adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thanks, everybody.